Hi, going live.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going live now.
Going to go to a Britishian bike, sir.
Now, can you turn it this way, please? Because I'm absolutely about to... Well, just turn it... Oh, if you don't want it, then that... There's some else windows, they won't do it, so... Yeah. So now, then, in terms of everything that feels...
Councillor Wise. Hope for loss.
Maybe put it down one. One. That's it. Social distancing for... Social distancing, so it's a zigzag.
So we are at seven o'clock. I am going to call us to order because we are live streaming, I believe. Thank you very much. We are going to have public participation, as is normal, before the meeting begins. But before public participation begins, we have an announcement to make, and I would like to ask our friendly colleague, councillor Ian Tucker, to make an announcement to the meeting tonight.
Well, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, you might have got wind of it, but I can officially announce that Glastonbury has received £23.6 million from the Towns Fund. An absolutely amazing achievement, and I think that we really must thank all the members of the Town Deal Board and the officers at Mendip who put so much work in, and our own officers, to bring that achievement. Of course, with it comes a huge, now, responsibility and amount of work. And if you think of the amount of effort we put in to deliver the first project, which was half a million pounds, this is 47 times the amount of effort that's going to be required now to deliver the second phase. But a huge opportunity for the town. And actually, we were told that ours was the most unique application they received. There was nothing quite like it, I gather. But we seem to have hit all the bits that the government were looking for, and it is holistic, I believe. So not only are we talking about industry, we're talking about sports facilities, we're talking about green energy, we're talking about wellbeing, we're talking about a whole, complete town package. So this is tremendous news. It's going to be a lot of work.
Quite an impact on the town, so we've been mindful of that, and we'll see how this unfolds. But councillor Tucker may speak more to this later on in the agenda, as it's an agenda right. So now, we have a number of people who wish to speak to the council this evening in public participation. And I have in front of me Suzanne Powers, who would just speak about the results of the resident survey.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. We did... We printed 4,000 actually flyers, which, a lot of which were delivered. They weren't all delivered, it was volunteers, so... But I actually got some of them back before they didn't want to go out. We didn't have a huge number of responses. About 30 responses, 19 via email or paper to verbal, social media. And they're all from residents, part of the monthly visitor. So I'm just going to whip through a very brief summary. I'll print it out, I'll hand it round, but also I'll make available to councillors in more detail. So they suggested, I put two parts to offer in... The question was, what can be done to help with less car traffic, more active travel in Glastonbury? So it was an open question, inviting people to think freely about what would help them themselves to get around more easily. So some of these suggestions were in town, some for the periphery of town or out of town. So eight people proposed complete or partial pedestrianisation on the High Street. Three gave us a good reason why we would not suit them, due to age, disability, carrying heavy shopping. And the third, that you might get dead areas. Three more advocated one-way on the High Street. Two suggested limiting traffic flow on Benedict Street, where there's one detailed response saying that Benedict Street is used as a rat run by drivers trying to skip the queues on the street roads. So that means they go even faster up Benedict Street. So it's really something that should be easy to address, actually, now we know that. One street road resident couple, in fact, proposed three-way lights at the Morrison entrance because they personally observed numerous near misses and actually people being hit, including pedestrian crossing. Two called for more benches to rest on. Nobody asked for fewer. Two asked for more trees. Two people suggested on-street helteres to help load shopping, to help stop truck dealing as well. Five called for lower speed limits in town. Four explicitly said 20 miles an hour. There were also five calls for traffic calming. Two people asked for to widen walkways, which would be in Chilwell Street, and trim back overgrowth. Free or hired shared bikes, bicycles were proposed. Also, cycle rickshaws and e-bike charging using the BOSH scheme, which is designed for the towns of this. Using green transport as a tourist draw, that seemed like a big thing. Local buses between town centre residential areas were focused for three respondents. Two called for town hall car park to be made of a public transport hub. That links with other people asking for bus connections to rail stations. And four people asked for park and ride, which I gather hasn't happened. Two of them again mentioning this car park here. Two people asked for less parking. One person suggested mapping mobility routes. And for out-of-town proposals, five people called for cycle cars out of town. Two of these explicitly proposed using old rail lines. Four people asked for more buses to rail stations, which I think is really important, including electric buses and a 24-hour timetable. So we're linked with other places if we don't have to drive. There are two proposals for light rail or reinstating trains. One person asked for freight transfer hubs so that smaller vehicles could be used for deliveries from out of town. Two people said stop building on the edges of towns. And one person asked for improvements at Walkers on the 839 as it passes through Southway. So there's a bit more, there's a bit more background. But there's one other thing I just want to say personally, because obviously, a lot of you know I've been campaigning really hard since I moved back to Glastonbury, which is my birthplace, allowed to be my hometown. Over the past 20 years, I've seen how the ring roads and the main roads have actually established a stranglehold on the most beautiful landscape. So we cannot get out of Glastonbury without risking our lives on terrible main roads. And in town, we're suffocated by fumes because, of course, people can't get here without their cars. And until this is addressed, until we stop making everything dependent on people travelling to this town by car, then it's not going to change, I'm afraid. And that's a big ask, and I'm really asking you to think about that very, very seriously, with the park and rides and so forth, buses and trains and public transport, to bring people here. Absolutely essential before we change the culture of using cars. And we all know the roads are overfull already, so it can't fit more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am remiss. It's a little unusual to find ourselves back into a room, and I forgot, as we don't need to do this on Zoom, to actually tell everyone exactly what would happen if there was a fire alarm. There is no fire drill tonight, so if we hear the alarm, it is actually real. And if you hear the alarm, you make your way out and go down the main stairs here. Don't use a lift. You'll be able to see the directions to the fire central points. And if that exit is blocked, there is a fire escape exit that goes down the side of the building here. So I do apologise for not mentioning that before. I'm a little out of practice. But thank you very much. Thank you Suzanne. The next person I have is Angela Friend, who wishes to speak about fusion. Thank you Angela.
Yeah. Good evening. Taking into consideration the situation. The Mendick Disabilities Association, i.e. the mallards, have been at Scrooge Pool for 40 years. Our normal Sunday activity, everyone would arrive at approximately 12 o'clock. They would then come to the desk, to a committee member, where they would be registered and they would pay their three pounds. Off they would go for a swim. Excuse me. If you feel that way, I will leave.
I was part of swimming with it.
And off they go for a swim. After the swim, we come back to the social area where we do our own coffee and raffle to offset the £110, which we have to pay every week. The present situation now is the... It is unworkable because the young people cannot enter the building until 12:15. They have to come swim-ready, have their swim. They cannot come... We're not allowed to have a table, a desk, where we can register these young people and their parents in. We cannot no longer take cash. They have to have their swim, and we leave premises by 1:45. It's really... It's not really workable because we cannot take, register, making sure that we know who's there and where they are, that sort of thing. One of our members who lives in Torby Avenue, he's got a severely autistic son. During half-term, he booked an hour swim and strode, £18. There is £18. Of the five or six pools that there are in the Mendick area, there isn't one that has a session specifically for people with disabilities. A group of us, like, over the years, we've done a lot of fundraising, we've got with Carnival, Welsh Fund Run, all sorts of things, to raise funds. And then we have our donations, which have come from you and from Street Council. We had a wonderful sum of money given us from another body last year. A group of us now have been going to Cheddar. They have the most amazing pool out there. They have a disability session on a Monday. And yesterday, in that pool, there was eight mallards and two others. I know the situation is bad, and I try not to mention the F-word. But, you know, the situation, you know, we... The reason I come here really to say that is perhaps in the future, we might need your help. One of our members says we should fold. But as we've got... I would hate to see the money that we've raised and local people, councils, et cetera, have donated. I would hate to see it having to go somewhere else. But that's me for now. But as I say, we might need your help later in the day if things don't work out for us. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you Angela. Next, we have Claire Rosalie Burke, who is speaking about land.
I'm a defender of this lady. I used to have my children at mallards, and it was... They looked after my children when they were... So again, I ask things for her because they are good. And they might have had kids autistic. Right, dear town councillor, I come here again tonight as a symbol of hope for Glastonbury's community, travellers, bandwidth and gifting. I'm also one of the main councillors for the FFG in Somerset. Once again, I ask that you consider and act very carefully on how you address your actions towards the community. Once again, eviction notices were ordered to people on Brenton Otway, so this is the second eviction order. I specifically asked the town police if I could have a copy of that. I've also asked the town clerk if I could have a copy of that, still haven't received it. On top of that, you asked for minutes as the last meeting. We still haven't received those, and I spoke to the secretary today, and she said apparently you're a month in behind before we get the meeting minutes. So understandable, that will come time. These people on Brenton Otway have lived there in peace for years, months, whatever. They come from different areas and come from all over. They're not all from Glastonbury. But the problem we have now, as you all saw on media, if they went into Bristol, helicopters went in, they pulled out calibers, it was absolutely distressing, I cried. These are disabled people, families, babies and children, they've got nowhere to go. And I told you last month that we've got a problem already. Now we've got a big problem because they're coming from other areas. Glastonbury is a spiritual town. These are spiritual people. But they come here for healing, a little bit of peace, a little bit of rescue. Once again, please consider very carefully the wants, needs and the land right, right, as a whole, for the community and its people, respect their wishes and wants as a whole. Communication is extremely important on all levels, including community, the building we're here. We're doing our best. As regards to the rubbish, that you all put money into over COVID so they can have skips, sanitation, water, recycling, it's taken away. If you look in your newspapers, it was stated that the encampments at the bottom are torn elsewhere. Sorry to be disgusting, but there's human waste because they haven't got toilets and sanitation. On Boydies Mount and Morelands, it's different. They've got compost looms in, and they're doing their best to conserve recycling and rubbish as best they can. We're even putting in pallets in a square, glass, plastic, whatever. They're paying money out of their own pockets for skips and people to take the rubbish away, but it still does not solve the problem. We've got COVID. It's a disease, apparently. It's debatable. You've got rats down there now. We've now got a rat infestation because there's rubbish on the side of the roads. There's no toilets down there. The only toilet they can use is in Aldis or the Booker Bar, or they have to go into town or use the compost looms on the field. Well. Right. There's kind of evidence, we've heard, that there's gates of lollards going in around town. The erecting and putting and in place on common land. Common land goes back to the poor people. It goes back to the duty book, and I will quote this, it's also made it to the Macarthur. And also have evidence on Stonehenge, I'll come to that at a later date, I'll give it ordered at a later date. Boydies Mount is a sacred place. The people living there are doing their best to look after it. We've also gone to English Heritage. They have not got a problem with being there. They also don't have a problem with being at Stonehenge. Because if you look into that order that puts Stonehenge, the land was bought for the nation. They have prevented people over developing, going onto that land. There were 13 villages around Stonehenge. Stonehenge is connected to Acre and Glastonbury. People, not only travellers, travel now straight into Glastonbury. They're coming. They are coming in apartments. As a government, that's a different story. But if you put in these laws, rules and regulations, they're going to force them here, and we're going to have a major problem on our hands. How do we address that? I don't know. These people don't want to live in brick houses. They want to live their lives in peace. Thank you for taking away the rocks at the bottom of Weary Uphill. I've noticed that respectfully, and you put in trees. Thank you. It looks lovely. Appreciate that. Because now it can pull up on the side of the road with the horse and car, and it's safer. Also, the other thing that I'd ask, you've got a water trough here. Lovely that the units have got water, but it still goes back. There's a piece underneath. Let the dogs and the horses pull up and have a drink as well. Saving down at the bottom of Weary Uphill. There's a trough there, oil and oil. That's old. Also, I've noticed that you have, in Benedict Street Church, all places, there was a charity set up by the church, and I think you might have been how councillor, I have to be, but we might have been it. But there was a charity set up specifically for the people of Glastonbury. I hope that's still in place because it lives, that we, the church and the council and the people, must listen to the people of the land and help the poor and give them their needs. It didn't say Benedict Street Church. It's still on the wall. That's history. That's history. So again, I would state, I would like the evidence put forward from the town council meeting. I'd also like to see all proposals put to the town. You always think money, please don't want to spend anymore. When you get your money into the government, brilliant. We've got the hospital down there. There's no eternity in this. One. We've got to go and talk and go for. Send emergency, emergency to the town community. Thank God you've got people that know what they're doing. There's no eternity in this down there, so let's spend the money on the town community. People asking for land. Right, from what I've been told, there's going to be a meeting at Boydies Mount on Friday, town council. Please listen to what they want. Put in the place what you want, come to some sort of agreement. Because money has been put forward and forward and forward and forward and forward for years. This goes back, as far as I remember looking at some of the information, 2014. Right, money's been spent in Shipton Mallard, putting individuals in units and other areas. We haven't even got a way out of TA in Glastonbury. We've got people on the streets. We've got trouble with, like I said before, mental health, domestic violence. It's not only people in the community, it's people in the travelling community as well. They need support. Don't take away our mental health place. I've been there, and they've helped me big time. So keep the hope for that one. There's a lot coming up. There's a lot of information. I hope we can work together. I hope we can solve this problem once and for all, but you're going to have to take into consideration now, there's a lot of people coming from Wales and Bristol and other areas, and it's going to get bigger. You're not going to get away from this. It's happening. The government have put in these laws. We're trying to turn them around for everybody. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. We now have Simon O'... 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 Sorry, Simon O'... Who will speak about rewilding Trillion Trees Initiative.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sean Wakesley, your time. John, this is for you. It's dedicated to Danny. I've been living in Danny's house for almost the past six or seven years, and these are you guys, Sharon and Alan. I produce the most, all my work I pay to myself. I contribute to thousands and thousands of hours, with environmental work and activism over the past 10 years. And basically, for two reasons why I'm in space with the being Glastonbury, they're all with us. Both David Robinson and Danny Michelle have passed on, and I'd like to say in my sincere reverence, all of you, and we, Danny, love you very much. Time, waste time. It is the most precious thing we have. That's what it is. The Trillion Trees Initiative is underway, and this is what is going to save this planet. There's been a massive category error. CO2 is not responsible for climate change and global warming entirely. The whole emphasis has been shifted. The councils have their carbon neutral bits. They're in it. I'm from Tormo. I work towards our 20,000 acres. Isn't that marvelous? Great. But Trillion Trees, that's what we're looking at, is 80,000 acres of Tormo. If you guys are going to participate in Trillion Trees, I think you should put some of that money on to given to social enterprise, environmental enterprise. You can make that money work for yourself. Vision, Danny and I, and myself, was never anything forest, the trees around Glastonbury. The trees that we can harvest, deals that we can work for the council. This is a council initiative. This is putting emphasis back into your hands and not, you know, the money game. So, you know, to the hospitals, where it's going, you're making money, making this money work for you. Over the last 200 years, we have cleared collectively, I'm talking in trees, the past bit of threat, but it's 2.8 trillion, 6 trillion trees. And we have lost 40% of all wildlife on earth, all species that they've got. Brief? Brief? I'm curious. I can't speak about it. So worried to come and speak to you guys because of the 10,000 hours I worked with this, and how do I parallel that into three minutes? We had three bands, and they weren't there. They haven't told the truth. CO2 has increased at a steady rate of 30 billion tonnes per year. They now stand at 500,000, something like that. It's steadily increased. Temperatures have increased, but they flatlined from 1940 to the 70s. And what can happen if forests stop? They won't tell you about that in the press. No longer. I've been fighting with people in exile. There was a big split. People fell out. It shouldn't be falling out. Should be falling, getting on. Basically, Trillion Trees Initiative is set to, and it's going to be on fire, it's going to sweep the world. I want Glastonbury to be involved. One million trees is our target. One million trees. If you grow 5,000 hemp trees in one field, we can turn that into clothing, three times the rate, three times the rate we're growing. Why can't Avlon have its own clothing line? We can enrich the community. Why can't we grow hemp? Why does it have to be Theresa May and her husband grows cannabis? We've got enough cannabis around here anyway. Anyway, yeah, I really, really want Glastonbury to take this proposal and this initiative seriously. Future. The roads, what is protesting because they're putting roads under the ground at Stonehenge because of pollution, and noise, and traffic. But if they've got a CO2 target and budget in, why in the hell do we need to do that when it's all going to be a lottery? Does that make sense? The traffic can go by quietly, fine. They should build underpasses into Glastonbury, under the aisle, you know, under the memorizing forest, the weed field, six mile forest. Yeah, 10% of all land on earth, and I'm asking all councils, these are going out to every politician in Britain, in Europe, in America, I will speak to Russia, I will talk to the Chinese, I will speak to everyone. I want you guys to be involved. This is Glastonbury, the heart chaperone of the world, ladies and gentlemen. This is Glastonbury, the heart chaperone of the world, ladies and gentlemen. And you can find all information on the One World Debate, it's a public page, you're operating, you should be able to access it. And I will also forward information for the British meritocratic resolution. It was my work towards the common law and David Robinson, what brought me to the town. I think I've never thought of this, I've never done it before. But yeah, I will put the British meritocratic resolution, that talks about the centre of practice socialism and how communities can enrich themselves. And that should be there, and it's not there. Otherwise, not there, I'll put it there. And I will also put the Tree Light Two Seventeen Project, which I've been working on since 2016, started here in Glastonbury. Got twenty thousand acres in Tormo. XR, and then all over the world. I wasn't, you know, I'm a bit part in that, but I'm glad it happened when it did. Because if it didn't, we wouldn't have our carbon neutral bits, you wouldn't have your twenty-six million pounds that I've been using for ten million pounds towards this, and make a hundred million pounds. We're going to leave it like that, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
I think perhaps one normal person on my list, what do you, what do you think here?
Okay.
I'm very sad that nobody did, so thank you very much for the dedication. Simon, I wonder whether you would be happy to light the Glastonbury candle for us to cast here? It was something that Danny was very fond of.
I'm sorry, guys.
The light is by the side of the candle. And it is our normal practice to stand and have a mini side as well. So if we stand now and wanted to have a mini side, and we will remember all those who passed over, and the things that you mentioned, Danny will think about. Thank you, everyone. We have matched up the formal business of the councils.
Yeah.
Before we do, I would just like to remind councillors that we have agreed to read and observe our standing orders. And remember that it is one comment to each item, and that you have a limited time of a few minutes to speak to each item. So do be mindful of that as we move forward. Thank you very much. I would like to ask the clerk whether we've received any apologies for absence this evening.
Yes, Your Worship, we've received apologies for absence from councillor Terry Napper, who's attending Street Parish Council. And councillor Liz Leishen will be attending this meeting later. She's also attending a parish council meeting in Street, and will join us when she can.
Thank you very much. Councillors, we have proposed the agenda, or might start to apologize for our absence.
Thank you. Afternoon.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to note that he's returning from London this evening, and will be attending to make the meeting. Councillors, in relation to the agenda, are there any declarations of interest from tonight's agenda? I have to take that as no declarations of interest here during this evening. We realise that you do have an interest, please make point of order and let us know. So we move on to approve and transparett the minutes of the town council meeting that is held on the eleventh of May. Councillors, I would like to take one. Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five. And page six.
I have a thing. So this is item thirteen on page four.
Councillors, would you be happy to stand?
So it was, it was item thirteen on page four. And it was agreed by the majority to approve the motion by eight to six. No, that was eight to six against the previous one, sorry. And then it was six sixty for this one. Forget it.
Thank you very much. Councillors, I'll remind you to please stand, because it will help people who are watching us on to know who's speaking. Councillor Henderson?
Thank you. And just to say that I did offer my apologies in a letter I wrote to the clerk. I wrote, I left it to him, or emailed him on another subject, and at the bottom I said, by the way, please accept my apologies.
Thank you, we will note that. Councillors, if there are no other amendments of the minutes, do I have your agreement to sign them off as a correct record of the meeting?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Whilst I do that, I will now ask the town clerk to go through the next item, which is the resolution or the summary of actions from the previous meetings, and that is committee meetings.
Thank you, Your Worship. The summary of actions from the last town council meeting were quite few, because of course it's a very formal meeting with the induction of a new mayor and deputy mayor and standing committees, et cetera. There were two actions, I'll share them both with you. Councillor Napper, you will recall, shared a concern, or he took on board the concern raised to him about the pedestrian crossing on street road and the fact that it was invisible. The pollution beacon was hidden behind foliage. That was dealt with on the next morning. And I believe it was councillor Tucker raised a concern about the police post being closed to general public. I've spoken today with Simon Lancy, and that's Sergeant Simon Lancy, and I can share with you that the two concerns that they have had to address are both almost deliverable. One was the low broadband speed, and therefore their phones weren't always working there. So they've managed to, they've put a new line in, that went in about ten days ago. And the second is they're to put a panic button in there, and that's to be installed in the very near future. So I am assured by Sergeant Lancy that the police post will again become accessible to members of the public in the very near future.
Thank you very much. Can you speak to that now?
Yes, it's going to be kept on the agenda.
I was saying, Your Worship, I said at the last meeting, having had the police report, this was suggested, I'm not sure of the actual past, but it should right to review this commissioner, pointing out how bad that particular police report was, and our concern at the various problems that they have in the town, and that was listed in the report. I'm not sure whether that was done. Some others may be concerned about the manifesto of the new police commissioner in some respect. Nevertheless, I think we thought we should bring to his attention the fact that Glastonbury has particular means, that what we could have perhaps a strength that police team.
Thank you very much, Councillor.
In response, Your Worship, I may, I did write to, sorry, I beg your pardon, the multi-agency group, which is the county council, district council, police and the wider group, did correspond with the new police and crime commissioner, of which I then sent a subsequent email to him and received a bit of a holding email, but acknowledging the concern. So I did it secondary off the back of the MAG response.
Thank you, Councillors.
Thank you, Your Worship. Going back to the minute, page four, item J, request that the benches are restored and closely monitored. So I came down to High Street twice a day. No members of the public or tourists could sit on those benches because we use the crowd that's there, drinking away, and not a police officer in stride. I abstain from that vote to reinstate them. It's an awful shame that a lot of people, tourists, cannot rest in my presence and sit down on those benches.
Thank you very much, Councillor. I also spoke to the police about this issue and was assured that they would be monitoring the situation. And we can only hope that we keep on following to our local police team about the issues in Glastonbury. So the benches were reinstated to allow people who have elderly or need to rest. Of course, they cannot do so if people are just using them as what some would have to me as a social club. There we are. We will, we'll call that that, I'll ask the clerk to raise that again, which led in the police as a way. Councillors, we were hoping to have a member of the police force here tonight, but they're not here.
No, you have a police report, though, Your Worship.
So, Councillors, we'll see, table is a police report from PC Kates Myers. It's slightly shorter than the one we had previously. Any comments on this? Please raise them now, if not, please come back. Councillor Henderson?
I would just like to ask the town clerk. Obviously, there has been monthly meetings with myself, councillor London, Tom Miller. And now that he's been conducted by, I was just wondering, are we looking to reinstate those meetings with another member of the police force?
Once, Your Worship, the mayor, deputy mayor and the sergeant have recently met. And that's more sort of strategic than the operational meetings that are still to take place, not with Tom Miller, he's still about another six weeks away from his succumbent. But we are net to believe he will be returning, and it is intended to reinstate those meetings. So the one with yourself and councillor London and myself were operational. And the meetings, the mayor, deputy mayor and the sergeant, and when required, will be the inspector, will be more strategic.
Just do, actually, yes, sorry. So that if, for instance, I had a, or either anybody had an issue that they would normally bring to the base in that meeting, I can go through yourself or the town clerk?
I would suggest going through the town clerk, as at the moment, until Thomas has returned.
Thanks.
Yes, Councillor?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Just a quick notice, I don't believe I see any, anything here in review that concerns the High Street, which is a bit unfortunate considering. Yeah, and this is pretty unfortunate, because the High Street has been in quite a poor state, I've got to say. And I'm not, I'm never prejudiced, did you know, against anybody? But there has been definite issues that I've noticed in the High Street, and not just from today. I saw them today as well, but other days. And I've had complaints to me personally concerning what's going on there. And I think it would help if we asked the police if they could at least walk up and down once a day? And just something, just a token show that they're there? Because, put in, as you know, when we, when we put the, ask for the benches to be reinstated, I was a little bit, a little bit apprehensive, and I did put down somewhere that they should be put down on a trial basis, and that they should be monitored, it should be monitored. I think it was an email to the town clerk, maybe, I can't remember exactly where. But I think it would be good if we were, if we were monitoring the situation, and also asking the police. And I know they're stretched, I've got all the faith in the police, but they are unfortunately not doing this. And the people know that no police are going to come there and then check whether they've got a particular licence for a hawkers licence, but we're supposed to move with a hawkers licence, I think?
Yeah.
Not, not just be in one place, and et cetera, et cetera. So if we could do that, I would be quite happy and find out what's going on.
Thank you, Councillor Coppel. We'll have councillor London, and then councillor Bishop, and then councillor Stig.
Well, I'm not very happy to hear, but we've got now two concurrent topics of meeting. When we are one body, I think that we all, all have, should be aware of what is happening, both behind the scenes and at a higher, what we might call, strategic level. And I don't think, you know, it's going to be a problem if, if we're hearing about or raising operational questions, one time short, what, where the line might be drawn. And then the mayor and the deputy mayor and whoever is raising the strategic questions and whatever they made, this is all. Where is all that getting back to the rest of the world? I think once some members might feel they don't wish to get too involved with these matters, we are ready, by the way, to take care of these situations, and maybe for those people that the town council is responsible for. Though in talks that I had this last week with the shop owners, it's more apparent to me that before the oner stage of saying, I'm sorry, the more responsible for those things, I amend it, five minutes, five hours. It seems to me, from what I've heard, that people are expecting us to be more. And I suggested that we, we look towards having a rule policy for what is tolerated, what of those tolerance we have in the town itself. We consult with the general public, and try and draw up some form of, to the same guidelines that we can all agree upon, that the police can adapt, so that when we get in trouble in the shop, and say, look, what are you doing about this, what are you doing about that? We can point to the fact that they were consequences, and that we have something which might take some time to look through. But if we don't do this, then once again, if we're talking about these issues for another ten more years, and I think, and councillor Tucker said in the public briefing some years ago, this has been going ten years, it's going to go on for another ten years. And in the meantime, we've got visitors coming, and they're not liking what they see, and they're staying at the shop, and we don't want to go back there. So we do, even though it's not our direct responsibility, I think we do need to be doing something important. And so I really like to suggest that we don't have split meetings, and we don't have the repeat situation that I had whilst talking to the police force, where our clerk talked us that we were talking about prohibited information, and we could talk about it. This all needs to be learned out by yourselves, by other members, so that we are not running a two-tier council, where the officers know something that we don't, or the mayor knows something we don't, we know something that the mayor doesn't know. This is, this is not true. So please, let's have some conversation.
Thank you, councillor London. My very brief response to that, before we move to the next council, which is, and I have seen it a couple of months as well, that the information that the police wizards to know is presented to this council every month in the police report. That's the information that the police have decided that they would like to share. The opportunity to talk about operational things is one that would have been carrying on with Tom, and that would be related to Glastonbury's local police meeting. The strategic meetings that the deputy mayor and I have had have not been the situation where we're telling the police anything. Indeed, it is a, some information that, from what they would term, so that they would like us to know and be aware of, as the mayor, the firm, the clerk. would turn to, that they would like us to know and be aware of as the mayor, the town clerk. It is their wish that that information is not spread further because it is strategic and it has bearing on things that are happening within the force. They would be possibly not useful to share wider. And I am grateful, councillors, you're just going to have to trust that the police know what they're doing in relation to this. They've had a few hundred years of experience in what is good practice with these things. I believe that as things are addressed, the need for those strategic things will possibly lessen and we'll get back to the situation where it is that local police team are waiting. So we're coming out of lockdown and we're starting to lean out. There are many issues we've got about in the progress section tonight, many issues relating to things in town that reflect a national situation and situations happening elsewhere. The police are sharing with town clerk in ourselves. So the police, we have some knowledge of that as a council. We would certainly share anything that we do as a board to share when you, if the police wish. So that's my response to that. Thank you very much. I do understand your frustration about it. Councillor Bishop?
Yeah, careful. Thanks for the fact of, um, right.
And the mayor.
Sorry, mayor.
Your worship.
I am certainly delivering for, I apologize. Councillor Cawthill and councillor London. And my great request for allowing the young to like or come concerning post demonstration this Saturday in Glastonbury. But I definitely believe that the police would be here to ask questions of them. I believe the organised social media event again, of all of our friends here at Corby and other conferences, music, okay, and other appointments, speakers, this big part of the town, the High Street again, will disturb people coming into the town centre again. And shopkeepers have attempted London to press, to me, their concerned worries. The public reports the same demonstration held just last week at the shopping centre. The police want to shut the whole shopping centre because of civil disobedience. Now, I feel it's fine that we as a council stand up and denounce some of these illegal activities that town will occur on Saturday, okay? It's been quite far too long, okay? What if things happen all through Covid? Okay, we've had some response from the police on one occasion. Okay, but sadly, we're not able to ask the police here tonight. I just, you know, I just think it's another flight on the high of the town again.
Thank you, councillor Bishop. I don't, I don't think you will find that any of the councillors here would disagree with your points of view. Perhaps you could share with us your thoughts and your legends on what we as a town council should do about it.
I'm from Mac.
Yes, of course.
Yes. We've put out statements concerning trees and pots and things and other things. One of the town councils statement saying that we do not in any way support this event for a non-Saturday. Put it on town council site, make it quite clear that the risks are far secondary, okay? The vast majority are against this sort of government.
Thank you. You do know that it's lawful to have a cabinet?
It is, but the food.
That's fair. So is that what your, your protesting against or is it the nature of the protest?
Well, the nature of protest and what it brings to the town of Glastonbury again, it's been a time and time again. And shopkeepers despair at times. And local people will not come in the High Street on that day. Some will, some won't. Those who want to, for this gift, will.
So we don't support the subject matter of the protest, is what you're saying?
No, no, we shouldn't be. I mean, it's all over Facebook. On the, if we're not paying music, doesn't mean it's not authorised. Does that have to have a licence to do that? It's taken a table. It's not authorised. What we admit is that, I think, amended. Okay?
So would you like to propose a measure?
I'd like to propose motion that actually, sorry.
No, no, you don't need to.
I'd propose that this town council could stand up and represent the vast majority of local people that do not wish to see these sort of things happening during Covid times. Okay? There are a lot of people fearful that they're actually going outside at times, still, one or a year later. Okay? Now that we have people coming into the town, that being encouraged for all parts of the South West, the wider region. And I just think this town council should put out some sort of statement. I'm not a, 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 in a way, I'm sure someone, someone here will, that we do not approve of this, of this action. And spend time first supporting our shops in the town. Because some of these shops already ended up, if they have, they'll shut their doors. And they need the income more than most.
Thank you. So I have, I have the, councillor Smi and councillor Martin to speak. But do you have, your point, councillor Henderson, in relation to councillor Bishop?
Thank you very much. I didn't stand where type's coming from. And I think what we've got to say as a council, we can't, we don't police the town as a council. While our personal thoughts about this demonstration, which may or may not happen on Saturday, we have to, you know, uphold democracy to a certain extent. And if, if it is within the law, then there's nothing we can do about it, whether we agree with it or not. And I think what we could do is maybe get in touch with the police and ask them to monitor it. And if, if the law is broken, then they need to act. Now, whether it's to do with numbers or whether it's to do with incitement or whatever you want to say, if the law is broken, then the police should be obviously present and monitoring that. But as a town council, I don't think we can actually say we're for or against it. Because we don't really know what's going to happen, to be honest. If you understand what I mean. I mean, we personally might, because of social media, think, I don't understand this. But if it's within the law, it has to be allowed to go ahead. And I would just, I mean, I would just like to say as a side that the town in the past couple of weeks has been peed. I mean, to say that the town, High Street, is not busy and people aren't coming to Glastonbury isn't true. I mean, I've had loads of people saying how grateful they are to come back to the town. And it's very positive, to be perfectly honest.
Thank you very much. I think what councillor Henderson says is prudent. Because we, democracy and the right to protest happens despite whether or not we agree with what is being said during one of those meetings. As I said, councillor Bishop, I, I think that all of the councillors here would be mindful and agreeing with you that this might not be the best thing that could happen in Glastonbury. But we don't have the authority or the powers to stop it. And it's very nice to grandstand. It's a great thing to do, but it won't actually achieve any. And I think that we need to decide whether or not we wish to take you up on your position there to make a statement. But I think we need to be mindful of what that's going to be. So it isn't just empty words. Councillor Smart?
Thank you very much. Yeah, words. So what we need is action and, and pray just please.
A regular meeting with the police, Your Worship, and deputy mayor and town clerk. Strategy strategically. I have concerns from residents of the Actis estate that the summer solstice is upon us. I've got a meeting with them in a couple of days' time. They would like some reassurance that there won't be a return of vehicles on Breast New Road. Not only that, they'd like some kind of barriers put up, if at all possible, or at least a sign or both. But they want physical reassurance that that Breast New Road won't be reoccupied just prior to solstice and thereafter, as what happens every year. We get influx of travelling folk and holidaymakers in camper vans at this time of year. And quite often, because of what Glastonbury is, many of them decide to extend their stay because it's such a wonderful place to be. And there's a lot of people, as Steve said, who are enjoying the aspects of this town on holiday or otherwise. And many people I spoke to actually want to move here. So strategy, we want something in place in Breast New Road for the solstice and something in place at Stone Down Lane for the solstice. We don't want a repeat of what happened at Beltane. Now, so if you, in your talks with the police can really emphasise this, because in the past, we have emphasised this and nothing has happened. I'd even recommend partial road closure for the week, for the weekend or the period of the solstice. And if necessary, policed by ourselves or the carnival club, just with residence passes to prevent the clog up of Stone Down Lane, whatever it takes. Anyway, that's all. So thank you very much. I'm mindful we all want to have a drink. Oh, that's nine.
Thank you very much, councillor. I, I can assure you that in conversations with the police, that solstice is very much at the forefront. And I would imagine that the multi-agency group is also very aware of the impact of the 21st of June, not least because that is, as we know, the time of all restrictions as well will hopefully be lifted. So I, I think that you can rest assured that it's being considered. I will ask the town clerk if he would be happy to pass on your concerns from the residents to the multi-agency group when they next meet. But they'll be part of that.
Your worship, the multi-agency group met this morning. There is a direct email link to the multi-agency group. I will share an email with them tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Sturrock. Councillor Martin?
Good. And regarding to the bench situation, I wonder whether this would be considered just a normal action. Supposing we were to erect a sign which spells out our expectations for the bench situation to at least send a message which was visible, both to reassure long-term residents and to send a message to those who are abusing that facility and sitting around there drinking all day long. And it'd be quite clear by the sign, drinking with alcohol in the High Street is what it's heavily tested. And we expect a reasonable use of the thing. They're there for everybody's benefit. Particularly those who sail. And it is not acceptable to occupy them all day long. Because at least they know that the town council is taking it. They should be going, getting a bit tougher, trying to get a bit tougher. And they can't certainly then try ignorance or knowing things are not. And it might just perhaps encourage the police to enforce a little more rigorously. My understanding is they're a little reluctant to get too heavy about forcing.
But no, really, it's all. Thank you very much, councillor Martin. I'd just like to double check with you. Are you thinking something along the signs that you might see on a bus which says that please give up this seat if somebody?
That's sort of the tone, yeah. And a bit more in it, of course.
Thank you. I'm mindful, councillor, that you've already spoken to this one. Is your response to councillor Martin?
It is.
Mine would be to councillor Smi.
Right. So we'll start with councillor Smi's response and then councillor Henderson to the, councillor Martin's response, so councillor Cawthill.
Right, thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I'll be very quick about this, but I thought it was, it was relevant to bring it up. I've been contacted this week, no, yeah, this week, no, last week, sorry, the end of last week, where I had a three-quarters of an hour conversation with a resident of Stone Down. So that tells you who it is or those you know. And they are extremely worried about the solstice and believe that the road should be blocked off. And I intend to write an email to councillor Fothergill, but I might not need to now. Because if the, if the, the town clerk is going to write to the, to the group explaining the situation, I think it would be a wise idea to block some of the roads leading to that area for a couple of days before and a few days afterwards as well. And I think that would help. And because I can see, and so could this residency, that if we're not very careful, we would just have a return to the situation we have before. Because we already are getting quite a lot of cars and vans parked up there at different times. I drive by a couple of times a week, just a day, sorry, just to make sure. And I think it's something that we should be aware of. So I will leave that with you, Your Worship, and the town clerk to include that into the, into the letter to the group rather than bothering dear, poor, perplexed councillor Fothergill at the moment.
Thank you very much, councillor Cawthill. I'm sure that the clerk has made a note of that, and then we will. Briefly.
Yeah, I go along with Ian much his idea. If he would like to refine the wording and we could have some, a polite notice, reminding people what those benches are for. And if it came, if it needs a second or whatever, or if we want to have an email between yourself, town clerk or whoever, I think that could be something that would carry a little bit of weight.
So councillor, we're speaking to the police report. It is just going eight o'clock.
Yeah.
I am conscious that I have two potential motions that are being tabled here. So first of all, councillor Bishop has said that this council should make a statement. The council has not approved the protests that's happening on Saturday. Is there, I'm having a suspense, I'm looking for us to put that motion forward. Is there, if there's anybody who wishes to second that?
Yeah, that motion, Your Worship, but I'd like, I'd like, I think it's like if you put a statement on our website, that we should say that past the town councils, the town parades or demonstrations have a detrimental impact on the trade of the town. And then we'd ask any organiser in the future, please contact the town clerk and the local police team to explain what their proposals are and to then make appropriate arrangements for disruption to the laws.
Thank you. Councillor Bishop, are you happy with that amendment to your proposal?
Very happy. I knew somebody before, a question about that.
Thank you. So we have, we have a motion tabled in second. I just checked with the clerk that he actually got all of your words there, councillor Keary.
I have myself.
Recorded, Your Worship, was the Glastonbury Town Council are concerned that parades and demonstrations have a detrimental impact on the trade of the town.
And that you would.
As the organisers, to contact the town clerk and the local police team to give details of the proposals before the term.
Sorry. And they also need to contact Mende to see if they need a licence.
And Mende to see if they need a licence. Do you happy with that, councillor Keary, as part of the extended motion? Councillor Bishop, are you happy with the wording that you have now been devised by councillor Keary and councillor Cawthill?
I am.
Thank you. But are you happy that you?
I have, yes.
Thank you. Can I have a show of hands, all those in favour of this amendment?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, Your Worship.
Thank you. And I have a show of hands, all those against.
I just have a quick question, Your Worship. Because I'm not clear what a demonstration is about, why this one should be seen without, so I don't find out of a, or to all demonstrations.
Yes. All, all.
I'm not comfortable with that.
So this is, this councillor Keary's wording is slightly different to the original idea of the motion. We're not actually talking to one particular demonstration. Councillor London?
Well, I just think we should be careful and make it plausible. When we say parades, we're not including all parades on. It's a sort of type of parade.
Well, I don't know that we, I mean, I think.
That's not my, the reason why, before everybody was organising a parade, we talked with the town clerk and the police to go on. In any terms, can explain what's going on.
Yeah, that's fine. Councillor, we, councillor Smi?
I, I heard the wording of the motion from the town clerk and it didn't correspond with councillor Keary's original. That's why I was confused.
Thank you very much. I think that you're right to be confused. I will now turn to the town clerk to seek his advice because there was an amendment, an addition or a clarification added to councillor Keary's statement that I read earlier. I have recorded, Your Worship, Glastonbury Town Council, excuse me, Glastonbury Town Council are concerned that events, parades and demonstrations are, have a detrimental impact on the trade in the town. Organisers of the same are advised to contact the appropriate.
impact on the trade in the town, organisers of the same are advised to contact the appropriate authorities to gain consent.
Councillor Martin?
Mendit said that they may have a detrimental effect, not that they do, because not all of them do.
Thank you very much. Councillor Kiri, happy with that word "may" rather than word "will"?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Councillor Bishop, are you happy with that change to your proposal? Thank you, councillor Smart. I will add, as we changed it quite considerably for councillors to consideration, to have the part read again, and we will take the voting again.
Councillor, your worship.
Sorry, I'm still here, but the mental collection is definitely...
We're voting on the new wording, so whether, thank you very much, councillor Prior, of course, you're procedurally correct, we're voting on the amendment to the motion, so we say we agree that of the law, and then we move forward to vote on whatever motion succeeds. Thank you. But, no, would you like to read the amended motion again?
The Glastonbury Town Council are concerned that events, parades and demonstrations may have detrimental impact on trade in the town, organisers of the same are advised to contact the appropriate authorities to gain consent.
Thank you. Councillor Bishop?
Would it be appropriate to put in there, the authority, they should contact the town council, Mendit, the council and the police?
I think that that would be appropriate, thank you. Councillor Smyth?
I have to give consent for this sort of thing, so the word consent is...
Originally, it was said, in case of need for licence, was one of the original ones.
So councillor, I hope that you realise exactly why your motion should be submitted before the meeting, not during the meeting, but as councillor Bishop is a very new member, I thought it would be lovely to see him how he made a motion to approve. Councillor Bishop, you are now aware of the particular procedural problems that putting a motion forward at the table may cause. Councillors, you are right to be vigilant about the wording. Councillor Smyth, what is it that you are now suggesting?
I'm suggesting it be the captain's interest to get off the...
Of the intention to demonstrate, and not that we can give consent.
I think that people who are putting on events, that who may attract a lot of people, would have to approach the appropriate authorities to, to, there will be consent, because Mendit district council may have to give consent to an event, so as needed, for crossfire, etc. So consent is a word that would probably be right to use. Councillor, you have the ability to vote for or against the amendment. Do you remember this wonderful superpower that you have? Councillor, we wasted quite a bit of time on making sure the wording is correct. Councillor Smyth?
Sorry to be pedantic, but if it's Mendit district council that give consent, then it should be worded such.
Thank you. I am going to, and travel to the asset clerk, if you can read that amendment.
Thank you, your worship, I don't think I've amended it very much, other than adding police, Mendit, Somerset County Council and other authorities, but I'll read it again to you in full. Glastonbury Town Council are concerned that events, parades and demonstrations may have detrimental impact on trade in the town, organisers of the same are advised to contact appropriate authorities, police, Mendit, Somerset County Council, etc., to gain consent.
Thank you. And now, my, if that is the wording we are going forward with, if you approve of the amended wording, please show your hands now.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, your worship.
If I vote against the amendment, will you show your hands now? If you would like to abstain from voting, please show your hands now.
Three. Thank you.
So councillor, we now move forward with the amended motion, as it stands, the amended motion, I think that's a great term, councillor, all those in favour of the motion, will you show your hands now?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, again please, if I may, one, two, hands up again please, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, your worship.
Thank you, those against the motion?
Three, your worship.
Any abstentions to vote?
One.
Thank you very much. Councillors, please be mindful, if you wish to put a vote forward to the council, you must do so according to standing orders. Please be understand of standing orders. We now move on to our item six, we continue to consider the resolutions from the meeting of the planning committee and property management. Councillors, will you take your hands now?
Thank you, your worship. The planning committee met on the 18th of May, there were three applications before them, and recommending approval on each of the three, the detail is before you. The property and assets committee met on the 2nd of June, a few bullet points to read to you, if I may. The item on the council's replacement electric vehicle van, stroke van, is coming up later on this agenda. The property and assets committee have asked the clerk's office to continue researching replacement blinds and the re-sanding of the hall, the main hall. We have entered into, as we have as an authority as a council, entered into a contract with J S Wright and Sons for the planting of approximately 100 to 120 cricket bat willows. That application has been sent and has been acknowledged and received. The confirmation has been received for our application that Herbis Field is in, feels in trust. We are continuing to explore the cost of fencing and further negotiations with the transfer of the land at Pompales Bridge from the district council to ourselves. The climate emergency and resilience officer has been asked to prepare an application for submission for a solar array on the roof of the town hall, on the main hall. The committee asked for the reinstatement of the benches in the High Street, and that the multi-agency group to take into consideration the assets of the town council is required when seeking solutions to Glastonbury's housing requirements, and that was a motion that was approved. And finally, there were issues that have been raised through councillors and directly to the clerk's office with regards to the community fridge, and I was able to share with the solutions that have been put in place to resolve those problems. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Councillor, your worship.
Yes, so the second but one, the multi-agency group, that what we actually voted on was to continue negotiations with the multi-agency group. We didn't specify anything about seeking solutions for Glastonbury housing requirements. If you remember, it was a long and complicated debate, and we finally voted on to continue negotiations with the multi-agency group, but there was nothing specific other than that.
Thank you. You have to amend it.
This is only a summary of the minutes, your worship, and I know the word negotiations is in the minutes of the property and assets committee.
As long as it doesn't talk about that we are, that it's specific about the housing requirements, because if you remember, we were saying the multi-agency group was set up with regard to the traveller's situation in Bretton Road, and basically, we're looking for traveller site, we're not seeking a solution to Glastonbury's housing problems with the multi-agency group, and that was the debate that we had, and that's why, in the end, we voted that we would continue negotiations with the multi-agency group, but we left it open as to what those negotiations were, and you're agreeing, yeah.
So, Gerry, are you happy to amend to the...
Yeah, this is a summary, your worship, of the, of the property and assets minutes, and those minutes will be for the meeting for approval at their next meeting, this is just a summary, and I paraphrased it, but you are correct, councillor.
Thank you very much, thank you councillor. I would like to note those resolutions and on the next round, if you're comfortable with that, do you want to have it noted? Thank you very much. As councillor, I'm not here, I am conscious that this has made stuff credible to us, I am going to train to the order of the agenda to run to deal with the district council reports, first of all. I have nothing to report, if I have to take a report, but I will do tend to mind as things are moving forward, quite swiftly within the district council. But I haven't taken any questions, but how you should hear from our fellow first councillor coffin.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Yeah, I haven't, likewise to yourself, I haven't been overly busy with meetings in the last month, a couple of working groups, I think that's about it, really. But there are, there are a couple of things, I think, that are significant, are significant that should be mentioned here. One was the poll that was held recently, and the last, last week, between for stronger Somerset or one Somerset, where it was an absolute thumping majority for stronger Somerset, which is the two, having two, splitting into two groups, two, two councils, which I think is quite standing, Mendit, you may be surprised to hear, had the highest vote for the two Somerset, for stronger Somerset. Only by a couple of percentage marks, obviously, but with Somerset coming second in that level, but the whole average over the, over the county was 65. something to 34. So I think that's something worth noting, and I think everybody should take it on board, that's what the, the people of Somerset want, who voted, so that's important. So that's that one out of the way. I've got a couple of other, I've got one very interesting piece of boardwork that's come my way, so I haven't really got my teeth into yet, but this is, this is worth noting for everybody. One of my residents, one of the residents in St Edmunds, has a 275-year-old oak tree in their garden, okay? They don't want it, or in their garden and their next one neighbor's garden, it's a complicated position, but this is what is very disturbing, it's got a TPO on it, but the house insurance company are saying they want it cut down. Now can you believe this? And unfortunately, the planners have not given the occupants of the house very long to put up a defence for it. I'm going to be on to this very quickly, because it's a thing, but it's something to be aware of, I've never heard of this before, and it's the first time, so I think there's something to be, 200, I ask you, 275-year-old oak, they know the date when it was planted, and it's incredible, and that's in Ashwell Lane, if anybody wants to know, and it's sinful. That was the main thing, I've had a few other obviouses we all get, in our position, we get board councillor issues with people with, you know, the different bit, thing, problem, so that are really data protected, so I can't go into those, but yeah, all across the general bit, it's been a bit active, but I think it's mainly because of the sunshine has come out now, and people are coming out a little bit more and speaking a little bit more, which is good, I like that, I say, just like I said, I had a three-quarters of an hour conversation with somebody at Stone Down, and it wasn't the young person, it was the elder person, and it just goes to show, doesn't it, you know, that people, when the sun's out, they want to come out, and they want to tell you what's going on in their lives and what, how it's been, they're being affected. So I'm happy to take any questions as well.
Thank you. Perhaps we could do councillor questions at the end, but councillor Henderson, thank you for tabling the report, is there anything you wish to add?
I don't think so.
I thank you on behalf of the council for all the work that you've done in the framework. So we have a table report from councillors in the local area here. Councillor, any questions?
Councillor Smyth, and then councillor Kiri. I'd just like to thank councillor Douglin, in her absence, for such a detailed report. I'm going to be pedantic again, but there's two, two big problems that draw, drawn attention to with regard to Glastonbury's homeless and housing problem. The first one is that because we are sort of a hot spot, like us, as you mentioned, we have got a big problem with Airbnb and second homes in this town, and I think before we support any new housing estates, planning applications for such, we should bear this in mind, because often they're taking up second homes or used as Airbnbs, it's a big problem. The second pedantic point I want to make is that, as she correctly says, when referring to encampments of travellers, they are only illegal if Somerset County Council decide to treat it as a trespass, because in other words, there's no law at the moment that criminalises you for sleeping in a vehicle by the side of the road. Not, not that I support the, the actual numbers of encamp, of travellers in Glastonbury, because we're only a small town, we cannot, we cannot support realistically that number of, that number of canvassers. But, so Airbnb and the fact that the legality of encampments is questionable.
Thank you very much. Another question actually for the council?
No, because she's not here.
Councillor Bishop?
Yeah, I'm not too sure if I can fly a ticket, yeah, residents of Bretton Road, obviously you've been very grateful of the vehicles moved, but obviously there's been a lot of rubbish that's on the side of the bend there, and also been behind the red brick building, just before you get to the entrance where you're going into Ward's escape park, and the street edge, there's a whole pile of rubbish there as well, just left on five pips, and get back there, that's been two of the areas that were quite affected, yeah.
Shall I answer that one quickly? Yeah, providing it's not a private land, right, okay, we can report it to Mendit, okay? If you want to do it, or if you want myself, or councillor Cousins, or even...
Well, it might be, it might be appropriate for the councillors...
Board councillor, yeah, to do, to do that, to report that, and just, just adopt in that, or maybe, and they'll court it, okay?
Thank you very much. Any, any other question?
Just a point of information, at the end of councillor Henderson's report, a point of action for the town clerk possibly to consider, please do not feed the birds on the market cross, because this is the second person actually doing that and causing a problem down there. May I commend councillor Douglin, in her absence, for her report and also for her letter to one of the residents down on the Redlands. I am aware that Edinburgh has taken, are you listening, so you could tell her, Mike, if you wouldn't be, be real smart, that Edinburgh is taking action to tax Airbnbs and short holiday lets, but they are a city council in another country. But it's something I'm looking into, because it seems to me that it's only fair and proper that short holiday lets and Airbnbs should in some way be registered and possibly taxed at a local level.
Thank you very much.
Your worship, can I ask, please, a point of order, within councillor Henderson's report, at the very end, it's rightly pointed out, and in fact, I just underlined it, is that there is a suggestion that we do put up a sign, can I ask if that's an endorsement from the town council for that to happen, as opposed to just being a suggestion from a district council?
Can I just check with you, a point of order, do we need to pass a resolution on that, or is it enough?
No, no, enough, a few show of hands to give a guidance to me, please.
Councillors, can we give guidance to the recommendation that they follow councillor Henderson's report, saying that some, that he can not beat the birds, this is a bit of a bit of a question, I'm, to, 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 to,[1773.87]
Very much indeed, right, so, the current situation regarding peat extraction, I just wanted to clarify one thing, with that of the clerk, it is on the motion, it says current consultation, the council responds to the current consultation, with respect, I don't recall saying, or asking, or putting that on the proposal, but nevertheless, I presume that is to do with the consultation that's happened with the government, I'm not sure.
It's a county consultation?
It's a county, county consultation, okay, okay. But in terms of the, the rest of the proposal, I'm perfectly happy with that. It's essentially to understand the true cause of peat extraction in the Glastonbury, within the boundary, and as a council, we, we, we need to be aware of the action or the, the impact that peat extraction has. If we, if we consider the fact that it takes a hundred years for the natural replenishment of just ten centimetres of peat from the, the land where it's extracted and taken from, this is a serious and a significant problem. So every time we remove this layer, we're, we're removing a vital part of carbon storage, and that is obviously well known and well reported. So in terms of the, the fact that peatland stores eight times the amount of same area of rainforest in terms of carbon, and four percent of our product, our production comes from peat extraction in this country, that's a significant problem. So we, but we obviously need to address and consider this issue, and we have to consider as a council whether it is justifiable to continue to allow this damaging industry, and also to find alternative ways that this most precious of ecosystems and storage system should be alternatively, or could be alternatively used. So I think we should be mindful of the effects on employment as well, because I know that a number of people are employed in that industry, and suggestions could be for the implementation of grassland for agriculture, but more in particular, the installation of willow planting for cricket bats, fencing, basketry, and biofuels, and also the suggestion of tourist development, tourist resorts, obviously, such as the Sackville, they're very successful, and there's also the possibility of travellers, boat dwellers in the, as a lake village suggestion, which could also be a very encouraging, attractive proposition for tourists, and for the people, obviously, that could be housed there, and I think it's a real significant possibility there. Ultimately, working with the RSPB, Somerset Wildlife Trust, the NFU, the SCC, Environment Agency, the Somerset Drainage Board Consortium, and other bodies, we need to prepare for climate change, sea level rises, and the associated flooding, and which is predicted to occur, and the best way is to return the levels to their natural condition in a step-by-step, stage-by-stage approach. Thank you.
Councillor Brown, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, could you give me my piece of paper, the yellow one, lovely. So this motion came up, well, mainly because Brian was concerned about peat in the way that he's just, just mentioned, but secondarily, I can't stand, I'll kneel if you don't mind, it came up because there is an application number 20130254 for land north of Heathrow in Mir, which is right by Ham Wall, and as you know, the Starling murmuration at Ham Wall is the third biggest tourist attraction that Glastonbury gets. Now, besides all the carbon dioxide and climate change problems that Brian has already said, to have further peat extraction at that point would be really detrimental, and so the Climate Emergency Group suggested that this motion went forward so that we would write a letter to Somerset County Council opposing the peat extraction. That, that was the primary purpose, coming from their point of view, although it's been widened in, in the forming of the motion to a general motion. But I would quite like that, you know, if we agree to oppose peat extraction, that we also will then agree that we will write a letter to Somerset County opposing this particular application.
Thank you very much. Anyone who wishes to speak against the motion?
Well, not amend the motion, but to a bit more information that maybe Brian wasn't privy to.
Councillor Cockle, and then councillor Lund, who wishes to speak against the motion?
If you're allowed to speak, I'll speak against and for.
And councillor, councillor Brown, are you going to speak against the motion?
It's not an amendment or a clarification.
So we'll start with councillor Cockle and his point, we'll then go to amendment, and then we'll go to councillor Lund in his support or otherwise at the moment.
Okay, I'm, Brian and Serena, I'm pretty sure you, you're reasonably clued up on this, but the, the government are going to ban the extraction of peat in twenty, this is exactly what I'm going to point out, so that people understand this, they're only banning the sale of peat, as well as I can make out, to private individuals, but commercial peat, peat extraction and selling to commercial businesses will still be allowed, which is probably quite substantial, and so I think, yes, I think it's very good, you want to make protests, so just make that clear, so that people understand what we're, you know, objecting to, because it's time it was stopped.
That is correct, and we said it may stop in 2030, that is predicted.
That's right.
Yeah, but that is not yet clarified or confirmed.
Become law.
Yeah, well, they're suggesting they're talking about it.
Councillor Brown, you wish to do a suggestion?
Well, actually, councillor Cockle wants to clarify what I was supposed to be raising and making there, because I would like it not only to be writing to councillor, but to our MP, and to whichever ministry is dealing with this, and that actually it also includes the virtual aspect.
Thank you very much. Councillors, are you comfortable with the addition of the MP and the minister?
Yeah, absolutely, that sounds exactly what we need to do, thank you.
You go to speak, councillor, but councillor done on this first.
Okay, so yes, of course we, we want to support this, so I need to pick up on the wording, because I absolutely agree with the councillor's opinion. If you, if you look at the reports that just came out from the government, Prime Minister's head for planning, you look at the Susie Wildlife Trust, which includes the Wilding County project, very clear, and what it is, supportive against extending the extraction license in further, I think it might be more wise if we then support the bodies of campaigning, which is natural. And I just think that it's certainly really clear about wording, actively discourage the extraction, what do you really mean by that? Because of course people might think that we're going to be expected to go out there with our protest banners, and also promote alternative sustainable practices, you know what that is, and would you like to explain that to the rest of the council?
Thank you very much, and very good point, councillor, to the proposal section, yes, paragraph eighty-five, actively discouraging and also alternatives.
Yeah, actively discourages, to try to avoid, or suggest that any possible alternatives, the use of that land should be explored, and that, that has to be the, the main emphasis.
Councillor Brown, yes, you would write on the letters to be part of the actual discouragement, that's all we're, what you need to say?
Well, proposing to actively discourage the extraction of peat and to, and to seek out or, or find alternative uses for that land, that will promote the sustainable practice, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure on how that could be worded, I would seek some support on that, but I think we would be looking for, to propose, to actually encourage extraction of peat, and, and to attempt to restore the natural ecosystems that, that this land is, that this is what the land has been previously, I, I don't know how, it's a quite a complex thing to say, to state, but that's what I'm looking for.
Councillor Brown, would you like to?
Well, yeah, my clarification for the active discouragement was the writing of the letters, I mean, that's what we originally asked for, and Gerard, in his wisdom, changed the wording to, to the wording that you see, because he considered that its wording took into account the, the, the greater remit, but our original thing was objecting to the planning application, extraction of peat, and a request for a letter to Somerset County, so that was the active discouragement that we were actually thinking of.
Thank you very much. Councillor, does that answer your question?
No, see, I think it's also clear that you're not entirely clear on what you want to do with this, but, you know.
It just got expanded, that's all, and that's fine by me, because I think it's good, it's a good expansion that has been done by Gerard, and I'm fine with the expansion that he's done, from the original idea of opposing this particular planning application for the extraction of peat by Ham Wall, and I'm fine for it to be expanded out to a greater thing.
Thank you very much. Councillor Fisher?
Yeah, just to put a background off of this, please forgive me if I should get turned, I was at Walton Parish Council probably seven, eight years ago, when the government announced that it would be stopping, and the council then were against a local company that lives at the parish of Walton, who fast-tracked, fast removal of peat, okay, over ten, fifteen year period. It wasn't just the removal of the peat, and also the percentage of peat that it sell with the bags, it was bringing materials in on small country lanes or big lorries, to actually assemble the bags, so that it could then be taken back out, which created a traffic problem, okay? We're not going to undo, sorry, what's gone on for the last probably hundred and fifty, twenty years overnight, but I have four observations, and obviously there could be a lot of that left, but as we well know, that they, the Somerset County Council, I believe, granted them to remove a fast-track, fast amount of peat in a shorter period of time, okay? That's a bit of a background to it, I know, and I do totally agree that we must be mindful of being a big brother to other parish councils and trying to suggest that they should be doing on their patch.
Thank you very much, I, I take your point. Councillor Henderson and then councillor Cockle?
Can I just ask, is this, is this a private company operating privately on land?
So the planning application, the applicant is the trustees of Eclipse Marine Retirement Benefit Scheme.
Which one is Eclipse?
Location is P12, land north of Heathrow.
What I'm getting to, I mean, I don't, I'm not opposing the motion, but it's to promote alternative sustainable practices on this land, suggests that you have to encourage a private company to change tack on how it earns its money. Would that be correct in thinking that, to say, well, we don't extract peat, why don't you turn your land over to this, would that be correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that is a constructive response, or let's say intervention that we, we could take, as opposed to just blanket saying, no, don't do it. I think it's, it's the prudent thing to, and, and the most constructive way to do it, positive way, so it's, it's to suggest alternatives, that going along the lines of eco, you know, saving the ecosystem.
So may I, may I suggest to clarify this for us here, that perhaps the words promote alternative sustainable practices through the letter to the bodies that are writing to, and that would be a type of an intervention that this council would be capable of making from the same.
I agree, thank you.
Councillor Cole, very good.
Thank you, Worship. It's well known to local historians that the wrong is actually that of peat, in nineteen, in 2030, it become law, you cannot extract any more peat in England, but they still extract it in Scotland and in Ireland, they still do it by hand in Ireland. Around this area, it was very labour intensified, but now it's completely modernised by mechanisation, and it won't be too many people who will lose their jobs down on the levels. As for what you're querying, what would the land be used for when the peat is finally stopped being extracted? There's areas down on the levels where the peat was exhausted, and they created fish ponds and lakes, and loads of people go down there fishing, I've, I've never done any fishing down, I, I don't know what fish have stopped in there, that could be done as well, and plenty of will trees, that's up to us.
Yes, I do.
And there's certain amount of pubs that we use down on the areas where it's not the actual areas being flooded.
Absolutely, thank you, councillor Cole. I think it has to be a coordinated, you know, multi-factor of the process that's going to work.
Thank you, thank you, councillors, and I'm going to call to the votes, so all those in favour of the motion, please show your hand.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Oh, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, unanimous, your worship.
Thank you very much. Councillors, it is very useful for us to hear all of these extra pieces of information there is to mention, but we need to be experienced in our business. I ask if councillors would speak against the motion, because that would be a big, big hint, it's very good that you are supportive, but please show your support through the votes, we don't necessarily need to know any, any opinion on why it's a good idea, but thank you very much. I would ask you to return to standing orders if you are concerned about that, because we really need to make our business efficient as possible, and we did vote to do that, and we will recall.
Can I just clarify that the town clerk will be writing a letter to Somerset County Council on our behalf against the application for the peat removal that was the specific item that, that caused this motion?
Thank you.
Note to your worship, and also to include MP and the minister.
Thank you very much.
And may I ask the transection of the proposal savings motion, support the clock in that if possible. And I will move on to motion nine two, which is proposed by councillor Brown and taken by councillor Cousins. Councillor Brown, would you wish to speak?
Yes, I hope it's pretty self-explanatory, that as we support the crimes, or the climate emergency, and that we have agreed already to do everything we can to reach net zero carbon as soon as possible, I'm just simply clarifying the policies that this council will have to resolve to implement a purchasing policy that will basically demonstrate our commitment to zero carbon. This will affect everything, I think, in future, from our buying recycled paper, et cetera, et cetera. That's basically it.
Thank you. I think it's very self-explanatory, so I do not feel the need to speak to this. Does anybody wish to speak against the motion? Councillors, kind of to vote, all those in favour of the motion?
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Councillor Cole's is out of the room, your worship.
I think that you have to accept that you may yourself have proved your own vote, to move forward to motion nine three, time code, which is being set in by deputy mayor. So this council resolves to convene an advisory committee to explore the improvement of Abbey Park. The advisory committee will report to the youth committee. I am conscious that the youth committee is going to have an extraordinary meeting soon, possibly on the fifteenth of June, and therefore I will be happy if we pass this motion to work with the chair of the youth committee, and that's where this subcommittee has a world-class meeting to come out, come from and report to. This motion is in response to a number of people who have been posting on Facebook and getting in touch with me, I don't know if any other councillors, who are parents, who are quite dismayed at the Abbey Park. if any other councillors, who are parents, who are quite dismayed at the Abbey Park condition, and the lack of facilities, particularly for very small children. And I hope that as an advisory committee, we may be able to bring some of those parents, some of the young children, and perhaps some of the children themselves into the dial around Walco's in there. There is section one oh six money, the councillor Coles has listed to us to in 2019, that needs to be spent by November, so that it's a timescale to the advisory committee. That is, section one oh six money would be able to contribute to the provision of perhaps pay equipment or some form of renovation of the site, that I, that would be able to fully achieve perhaps what my command is. But I am happy to propose a motion, and I would look to the deputy mayor to add anything to it.
Yes, simply that there is large public concern that we're not utilising this park, if everyone's familiar where it is, at the top of Fisher's Hill, and that we rely on some community input to know what they want before we spend the section one oh six money. I think it's quite a disgrace. It's one of those areas that different councils own and are responsible for different bits. But if we can bring it all together and have a park that is worthy of Glastonbury and its children.
Thank you very much. Would anybody wish to speak against this motion?
This one, that one.
Thank you very much.
Your worship, it's the track name is Youth Provision.
Thank you so much. I'm sure that both of us are happy to get the name correct. Youth Provision Committee.
Your worship, if I may, very briefly. I support this motion. I can't see how we can do our covering footprint from net zero, when you've got double-decker buses going up and down the Hoistwick.
So we move on to motion number nine, three.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're talking about the creation of an advisory committee, as called Youth Provision Committee.
Oh, I see.
I was wanting to ask a question, where you're not only Abbey Park, I believe it's something I heard at the council, who would have the authority to make whatever changes there are. And I'm not sure if this, I think, Abbey, please, but either way, we need to be involved with everything, to see what you have expertise on what would be available for young people, which is very extensive. I'm not sure if it really is bigger that there is a section one oh six thing, but this would be quite a complication for that, to deal with. We need to follow that, council, in a manner of.
Thank you very much. councillor, please like.
If you can recall that it's based by the church, and there's some further complication on the peace of public life.
The Abbey.
Thank you. I'm quite conscious in terms of reference for this, that we will include the stakeholders, particularly in the land, at least the land owners will need to be aware of. So thank you very much. Councillors, I would move to vote. All those in favour of the motion?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Your worship.
Thank you very much, councillor. And we go on to item ten, which is to receive the budget monitoring report.
Your worship, we go back to terms, councillor Coles, how the terms, councillor Coles?
A wonderful point of order, thank you very much, councillor Keery. We will now go back to item eight, item seven, which is the councillor's report. Councillor Wilson and I are absolutely delighted that you are able to be here, understand what you've had to go through to be here. It only reinforces what we already knew, is that you are a wonderful county councillor. And good for us.
Thank you very much. This is the end of my life. I've crossed through without even thinking back. I didn't have a report this month for the very simple reason that everything I'm working on, you're working on. Doing twenty mile an hour thing, doing advertising, I keep chasing after when that might actually happen. We've got huge amounts going on, highways, we're monitoring it. They have sent out the first dates for the first members group, and the members group, when they come as county councillors, four, four councillors, who hold their ward councillors from the town actually, who prepare. So MP and the leaders of state MP and MP. So that will be a direct application from the monitoring group, which is an officer group, to ensure that all tiers of the county are involved in the process. So I keep working my heart out, I hope, but those applications for the twenty mile an hour thing, for safe and positive children, will be submitted in October, February, February. I think this may be the first time that one group has been completed before the four-year term. But that's what the only thing for you, that's been ten years. So where I inherited that float, one group, I'm really glad to say that no one else has inherited it to let it happen like this. But people, my...
Thank you, Liz. Any questions for councillor? councillor Cole?
Thank you, worship. Nice to see you again, Liz. The issue of potholes, Magglin Street, is getting worse, and there's some really nasty ones getting worse in Wells Road. People complain to me all the time, their houses have been evaporated because heavy vehicles are going by all these potholes all the time. Having said that, councillor Council highways, they done well, and they left the rest. So do you have...
I can report that I have to be a certain step before the... I mean, it's supposed to do a ten percent step.
Small one, the lower one.
If you can, if you can match it back to me, a little bit closer to this grass road, long road.
Just past...
And then what I do is I make photographs, and I send them to the county.
Just past Leggins Mutton Road, there's quite a few. There's small ones, cyclists have come out with bicycles.
If there's any time, please email me, and I'll go out and take pictures of them, and I'll send them off.
I know you've got a good camera.
Thank you very much. councillor Bishop?
Yeah, it's nice to hear. We were aware today of an accident, obviously, certainly normal, with the dipside, that road there. I was contacted by a driver today, who's actually witnessed the accident. And it's quite clear that, I think, there's a second one down in the moor on that stretch of the dipside, the rubbing, yeah. I really feel the emergency order that you put, reduce speed in the direction of the way, always witnessed today, very lucky that no one lost a bike. Basically, the lorry that was not speeding, no, it's a forty, five, I don't know, but actually hit the first one coming in, and it went up over there, the trailer, the whole goods moved, and shifted the trailer, and it jacked out into the verge, not the other way, into the verge, and then it ended up, into the second hole, and then into the, the verge. And gone vastly well, yeah. There really needs to be an emergency order on that road, showing the lorry that's coming in, where there's a couple of signs saying, be aware of, but it's more than that. And I know that it was a very, very bad accident there, probably about four weeks ago. And we're very, very happy to change, it's a metal on our hands. It was very incredible to say, and I'm not too sure what emergency vehicles were on the site, I know that one of the witnesses vehicle has asked exactly what happened. And in response, we're very, very concerned what happened.
I'll place that with the utilities as well, to make sure I'm not concerned. We've got the same in Glaston Road, which there is a year, which I recently told you is another hazard, and I've another place of hazard.
The likely two, like you said, lorry, most of them, and we're very, very lucky that neither of them got out of the car, so we're very proud of that.
Thank you. Any other questions for the councillor?
He's your worship.
Oh, yes, sorry. And that was a bit...
Thank you, worship. Something I can inform you, that you mentioned or alluded to the fact that there's now a members group setting up alongside the multi-agency group. The officers met this morning, and in time, the recommendations from the officers' group will go to the members' group, and then be decided upon. But without breaking any confidences, I think this council will be pleased with the recommendations, which are going from the officers' group to the members' group.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you for being here. I hope that you might stay, so that when we get to the item, which is item seventeen, I ask you as well to...
Your worship, I would not...
No. So we now move on. I thank you, councillor Keery, for reminding me that we had to go back. We now move on to receive the budget monitoring report tabled. Any points or questions? Councillors, my only comment is, when we look at the actual line, and we come to the bottom line, if I leave you to vote, please, with the hoping that it's got an extraordinary year.
Oh, no, just your worship.
Any other comments, or can we take this note?
Please.
Thank you very much. We now move to the, to receive the internal auditor's report. And instead of any pattern raised in the court, I would, we'll see this progress in the hands here, starting with that of Jane, our sponsor, the five, the...
I will, your worship, thank you. It's a glowing report, really, for a difficult year, when we, in fact, I believe we didn't meet at all in face-to-face in that particular year that this relates to. The recommendations are fairly simple, because it makes reference to the fact that some of the minutes hadn't been signed. Well, that's not a surprise when we were keeping the distance through Zoom and other matters. And the only other one which was picked up on was the approval of payments, and you can read it for yourself there, which was a minor amendment required. And I feel that that is a more than acceptable response from the auditor in a very difficult year. And a year, your worship, when we had £250,000 worth of additional funds to spend very quickly as well, and we complied with the auditor on that as well.
Councillors, any other comments? I think that we should, as a council, give a vote of thanks to Ken, who is the responsible finance officer, but again, doing such a good marketing job during the COVID year. Councillors, if you can show your hands all three.
Okay, thank you, worship.
Pass that on to Jen, very much. And I have signed all of the minutes for the last two years, in a marathon session with Gerard in the day. So we now move on to...
And your governance statement, your worship.
Gerard?
Shall I? Yeah, that's the, you have an updated one. The one you've just voted on was your updated one.
Thank you very much, sorry. I would say you...
Okay. And your governance statement, which is before you, you have the detail, I'll just flash mine, so you know what I'm referring to. It's looking like that, with the blue charts or the grey charts in your case, because it's a photo...
I don't have them. Don't have them.
The other one, yeah.
Just give you a moment to find them.
Okay, I'll press on. It is my, you are signing off these, or asking your worship, or mayor, to sign off these accounts as a governance, taking into account the following. I'm going to read them for you from A. You are, as a council, comfortable that we've put in place arrangements for effective financial management during the year. If there's any dissenters, please, to this, shout now. I'm going to go through the E P blocks in turn. That we maintained an adequate system of internal control, including measures designed to prevent and detect fraud and corruption, and reviewed its effectiveness. If you feel that hasn't happened, then you must now speak. Three, we took all reasonable steps to assure ourselves that there are no matters of actual or potential non-compliance with laws, regulations, and proper practices that could have a significant financial effect on the ability of this authority to conduct its business or manage its finances. Four, we provide proper opportunity during the year for the exercise of electors' rights in accordance with the requirements of council audit regulations. Five, we carried out an assessment of the risks facing this authority, and took appropriate steps to manage those risks, including the introduction of internal controls and/or external insurance, cover where required. Six, we maintain throughout the year an adequate and effective system of internal audit of the accounting records and control systems. Seven, we took appropriate action on all matters raised in reports from internal and external audit. Eight, we considered whether any litigation liabilities or commitments, events, or transactions occurring either during or after the year-end have a financial impact on this authority, and where appropriate have included them in the accounting statements. Number nine is not applicable to us. So, your worship, if you would seek support for my belief that we have complied with each of those eight points that I have raised.
So councillors, I'm conscious that no one opposed any of the statements that you have for me to sign this off.
Yep.
Thank you. And while I do so, I'd like to ask Gerard to speak to the next page, which will be turned over. You'll see if the council...
Thank you, your worship, again. Sorry, it's financial evening on this, it's the time of year for it. This is very much about the facts of our turnover, where our expenditure was in the form of staffing, by comparison to the last year and the immediate year before. This particular year was accentuated predominantly by the £250,000 that came in, in support of the accelerator fund. And whilst we had put in place a larger staffing budget, and that's why it's reflected there, in, you know, you know where we are, that's because we put extra positions in place. I don't feel I need to go through this, other than share with you that I believe it's there to be endorsed, your worship.
Councillor Tucker?
Worship, I wonder, can I ask, do we know why the borrowings have gone up by £40,000? Because I can't remember us having borrowed any more money during this financial year. I thought, the only money that I thought we borrowed was on Herbie Field, which we borrowed about three years ago. And I thought that was the last time we borrowed some extra money. And I can't understand why it's gone up by £40,000.
It would have gone up by Herbie Field and the borrowings associated with St Delson's House, are the two loans that we have. I...
They're all old loans.
They're all old loans. Appreciate that. I don't know the answer to that, your worship. I'd have to inquire from our responsible financial officer, which I would do.
Gerard, is this time person, I sign this time?
No, it's not. It has to be signed off by the, about the third week in July, your worship.
I would ask if you could go back to Jane, with a question from councillor Tucker.
Okay.
If I could resolve that, I can sign them at the next full council meeting. I'll be in touch.
Okay. As far as I'm aware, your worship is in time. I will check that. I'll read these notes in a moment, but I'm sure that's fine.
Any other U I councillors, see anything else that we might want to go back and talk about at the council? Thank you. We postpone signing the off leave statement until the next full council meeting. Councillors, we now move on to the schedule of the page, which is the following. It does go over page numbers. Any questions or comments or reflections on the... councillor Cole? Councillor Tucker?
Why did we buy a tyre tube and not a new tyre? Was it just that it had a puncture in it with a nail or something and a tube would get over the situation? Do we know?
Which, tell me the reference, please.
Hang on, it's, hang on, it's... Yeah, 18. It's just an odd one because I always have, well, I wouldn't say always, but quite often...
Your worship, I can answer that for you. We had two new tyres put on the front of the tractor on the Wednesday. I was mowing at Herbie's Field on the Thursday.
No more set.
For a piece of wood with a nail in it and on a brand new tyre. That was the reasoning.
It happens.
Thank you, Councillor. This is the level of scrutiny and cost in the public space of this council. Any other comments on schedule of payments? Do I have your agreement to sign these off? Whilst I do that, we will go to the report from Advisory Committee. And Advisory Committee A will be the climate emergency committee as there is A as well as the community group.
Hello. So I know nothing about why the community footage is in there. That wasn't, didn't come from me, but there were several things from the meeting that we had, the climate emergency group meeting. So the first thing is, if you remember the past two years, we've asked for a £500 sum to enable the advisory committee to do its job. And I would once again ask if we could have that for this year, the same as we've had the two previous years.
Thank you. Councillors, anyone wish to really raise that suggestion? Then I also...
Thank you all very much. I assure you, we have spent it wisely both years. In fact, the last year helped for the Zoom and we were going to continue with the Zoom sub because the members of the committee find it actually much easier to meet because they're coming from various places. The second one is that some members of the group have been every Sunday, actually, going out litter picking and clearing cycle paths. And so the group agreed that we would recommend a monthly litter picking and asking that the town council can provide the necessary equipment because they're getting more and more and more people joining them, which is really good news. Townspeople are really keen on the litter picking. They're doing the reeds around and as well as pavements and so on. And one of the things they're short of are high vis jackets and those little things that pick up the litter. And they were wondering if this town council could help with that.
Thank you. I'm looking to you, Gerard, for some thoughts on...
Your worship, when we do a town cleanup day, as we are on July 18th, I do believe, we will be borrowing from Idi Verdi litter pickers and, well, that's more about tending to the foliage and deadheading and that sort of thing. But if we have a requirement for a lot of high vis jackets, then we do tend to borrow them from Idi Verdi. We don't have a surplus. I think in total we have about four litter pickers I can get hands on. But there might be a need to invest in a few more.
Thank you.
What date do you say, Joe? Eighteenth of July.
Thank you, Gerard. Just a question. So when we've done the town tidy updates in the past and we've had the high vis jackets and litter pickers, the grabbers, that's always been Idi Verdi stuff, has that...
Borrowed it from there.
Thank you for that clarification, Gerard, because they have been getting the high vis jackets and the litter pickers from Idi Verdi. They were just wondering if rather than going to Idi Verdi, they could come here. So that, I think that that is their question answered.
But I'm just suggesting, your worship, that it might be, as we now allocate them for £500, perhaps they might want to put some of that funds to actually finance to do it, to...
Thank you. I'll withdraw my question soon because that's exactly what I was going to say.
Thank you, yeah, I'll pass that back.
I think the advisory committee made evident the impression that we had our own executive team out there.
Yeah.
Would it be to explore the local business to sponsor the litter pick, and provide high vis and litter pickers? Since we've done it all on separate occasions, it's very beneficial. And just one other question. Can I ask, are the litter picks risk assessed? Do we have a risk assessed policy of anything with members of the public or other groups coming out and litter picking around verds or cycle paths?
Thank you. I think the words aged chapter comes behind, but I'll...
So I will answer that. Gerard advised that one of the members got chapter eight training and that was one of the things we spent our money on this last year, is that one of the litter picking cycle path low traffic people had the chapter eight training. So that's all sorted. Thank you.
Well, I just, this advisory group obviously changed into, shall we say, a conservation volunteer group, in which case is ill sure. So when the volunteers do what they do, this council surely has a part there. So if they injure, if they injure any members of the public, they could apply to the party. Or if they, you know, very seriously themselves, have we got the chance to... As a volunteer group, all volunteers do have that place.
Yes. And they are a volunteer group, of which there is one member who comes on to the advisory committee and who takes part in the discussions and asks that I bring forward things to the town council. But as a volunteer group, they are actually nothing, the town council is not responsible for them, let's put it that way. They are their own volunteer group doing their own thing.
Right. So would it be just handy to make that clear when you start to talk about it?
Yes.
Really, are you...
Yeah.
...anywhere else they go out? They all do define themselves by different names and then register themselves as a voluntary group and...
They do not go out as the Glastonbury Town Council Climate Emergency Advisory Committee. No, they don't.
So what do they go as?
No idea. I will ask. They're just volunteer litter pickers. That's all they are. Like most villages around Somerset have people who go out litter picking and...
Having worked for the National Conservation Forces, I'm very well aware that every group in the country has affiliated some area body in order to get those advantages. And it would be wise to affiliate them to one of the National Conservation Forces, to register for that. And then as they are volunteers, they are capable and through those national bodies to get work.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
It's only actually bodies who are county wide, also being on national basis, do volunteering and having worked in that sector. It's national bodies and regional and county bodies who actually have that support. But there are many, many hundreds of community activities that don't have that and are not part of that. But if they wish to, there is, what is it, tidy, britt and tidy?
Brit and tidy. Yep.
Thank you, Gerard. I think, Councillor, certainly may do. I think that you'll probably go back to that, just asking those questions, Councillor.
I've made a note of them. Thank you very much. There was a third thing that came up, and it's actually come up several months running, but I'm only bringing it here, which is that there was a concern that there are a large number of people on the waiting lists for allotments. And I contacted the lawyer for the National Allotments Association. And section twenty-three of the Small Holdings and Allotments Act places a duty on local authorities to provide allotments where they perceive a demand for them in their area. And there is no specific rule relating to the numbers on the waiting lists. Now, the numbers that I found by asking Sarah in the office, the Lower Side allotments have got thirty-one people on the waiting list. And the Glastonbury Allotment Association, the Common Moor allotments, have twelve people on the waiting list. And that's after they've reallocated new allotments to new people after the AGM in March. So they've still got twelve, which means there's a total of forty-three people on the waiting lists. And what we were wondering was whether this council considers this to be sufficient demand for us to look maybe to use that other land on Common Moor for a third lot of allotments. And I bring this up for discussion, not for any resolution, because it's something that we have been discussing and wondering about.
Thank you. Any councillors which will speak to that?
I've got an allotment, as you know. Down at Lower Side, there's so many abandoned allotment sites, unbelievable. I don't know why people are still waiting to get a site down at Lower Side. I got one right next to me. He's just had a letter and he's got the foot in. Charlie Farley, everyone knows Charlie Farley. Grass is high right next to my allotment. Love the seed that holds to my lot. Free cannabis across the road. This is abandoned, more or less. And if you walk around the allotment, it's loads, completely abandoned. So I don't know why there's so many on the way.
Yeah, I don't know why either.
I don't worry, Sarah.
Would you do that? Because it was Sarah who told me the numbers, but she didn't say that there were lots of abandoned allotments.
Yeah, loads of them down there.
Councillor?
So just a quick point. Yes, it was mentioned at the property and assets about the possibility of combining needs of land dwellers' housing or accommodation needs or sighting with allotment combination as well. So I would really appreciate if, obviously, Mendip could consider that all allotments. So Mendip and, you know, our council, consider that tomorrow. Yeah, thank you.
My feeling that way forward is to, as you discussed with Sarah, to find out how many allotments have been abandoned or abandoned used and then see what the residual number of wait times might be, plus that's...
Yeah.
Councillor Henderson, Councillor Tucker?
Joe, perhaps an idea would be to write to the people who've neglected their allotment, find out if they still want to keep them. If so, they want to tidy them up. And if not, then somebody can take part, somebody on the list can...
I mean, surely the town council should be doing that. We do that on our Common Moor allotments. We do regular inspections and people who are not looking after them properly will get the letter. And if they aren't wanting to carry on, then somebody will be given that. And we do that maybe at least twice a year. There will be new people coming in for ones not used.
Steve, they do get letters. Charlie Farley, he had one today. As I said, his allotment right next to mine. Need a combine harsher to move in there to tidy his up. And you walk, I walk around the whole site on a regular basis. And people who have abandoned them, they do get letters, but nothing seems to be done about people moving in, people moving out.
Councillor, I... Sorry, Joe. Gerard will probably make sure as we move forward on this. I conscious that Councillor Tucker wishes speaking and Councillor...
Yeah, I'm just looking for a bit of clarification here. Councillor Oaten mentioned about the other field of it. Now, I'm pretty sure that what you were actually saying, Brian, was that we should be looking at the idea of putting in mobile sort of...
Trainers.
Trainers.
Trailer tiny homes as moved on.
With some things. And I think it's an idea worth exploring at some stage.
Yes.
Or not in that position somewhere else, but definitely worth exploring. So I thought that was what, that's just what I wanted to make sure that people understood exactly what Sarah was saying.
Councillor Tucker?
Very grateful. The lot holders and every staff looked at the lot and questioned them, people run up and leave and if they didn't make a clear response, they would try to suggest that that's possible, that that happens particularly as...
Worship, can I come back, please, just for clarity for all of you? Every week on a Tuesday, Les and Sarah go down to the allotments. Every week, not monthly but weekly. And those allotments holders who are not delivering to the standard that is expected of them, yeah, it's three hits and you're out. You get three warnings. So it's quite possible that what you're seeing is the effect of the first, second warning and then the third, which Charlie Farley, as you spoke about earlier, has today received a notice to go. But I can assure you that we are monitoring and delivering.
So Gerard, would it be appropriate for me to ask Sarah to let me know the numbers once they've filled the ones where the people are being asked to leave?
Indeed. That's very appropriate, your worship. And I can also share with you that we've had a problem getting, evicting some tenants of allotments, particularly those who decided to put very large sheds on their plot. And that caused quite a few problems, but we got there in the end.
Thank you. I expect that once we find out the numbers, this will return to the table. So thank you very much. And I'd like to move on to the item B, which is just me and Luke. And I'd like to ask the Deputy Chair, Councillor Fry, if you wish to speak. Thank you for your excellent report.
The judging dates will be confirmed and the cleanup date will be confirmed.
Yeah, my question is, I have a garden that I would like to put in for the wildlife section, wildlife gardening. As a councillor, am I allowed to do that or is it not open for councillors?
June, I'm not sure, but I would suspect you are allowed to do it.
That's your reason, why not?
Okay, so I am allowed.
Great, thank you very much. And whilst we're talking about councillors' entries into competition, do not forget this year's hardest show. If you are producing anything wonderful, might like to enter in. Thank you very much, Councillor Fry. We see that the cleanup date is on Sunday, 18th of July, ten to twelve. Please, Councillors, if you can, make that day, please come along to what a good point will be, Gerard.
I can cross.
I can cross. And we will be advertising that event, I'm sure.
Yes.
We now move on to the housing and homelessness project. Councillor Tucker, do you have any report?
Well, I would refer to the new chair, Councillor Smythe, on that one. But I do, yeah, I would like, sorry, I would like to state that I've had a conversation with one of the presidents at the Morelands side. And we've sensitively agreed to arrange to go and meet up and have a powwow round the fire on Saturday to discuss their needs. And hopefully we'll, we'll have a bit of a frank and candid and hopefully it's useful conversation.
Thank you very much, Councillor. Councillor Tucker, I do follow that I work all the time. Councillor Tucker, do you have anything to...
Well, other than say I'm doing it all the time, John, but thank you, Gerard, for getting the minutes together, of which I'm sure you'd be happy to give a copy to any councillors who request them. Otherwise, I can summarise them now, but I don't think it's all that necessary, bearing in mind the time. But other than say, we had a very informative evening. Jan Leeming gave a presentation on the best living spaces and work.
Jan Harrington?
Sorry? And Harrington?
Harrington, sorry, not Jan Leeming. Going back in time.
A bit further.
It's quite wonderful who's working with Mendip these days.
Questions? Anyway, any questions on that particular meeting?
Councillor Tucker?
Thank you, Chair. Just to say, I think I intended the first couple of housing and offices meetings and have seemed to have not been informed of any lately. So just let me know when the next meeting is. I'll do my best to follow.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I would agree, it is very useful to have a new book of men officers at that meeting.
Indeed. Thank you.
There seems to be a nominee on Advisory Committee. You could actually, you provisioned to actually the committee of the council. Gerard, you could... Gerard, do you feel...
The only reason it was put on the agenda, your worship, is because we put an item on as a motion about the youth advisory committee, youth...
This one, no, by...
And if you recall, the motion that was approved is then having to be discussed, it was on there in case it needed to be discussed further.
We do have quarterly meetings, but this is, we are having the next quarterly meeting July, so we're running a course this summer. So we're going to have a quarterly meeting to start the very initial aspects, to do the motion this evening, and to do with a grant application, and to pass response, and that's happening before planning. It's 6.30, we're doing it, there are...
Correct.
6.30, it must be, just to like, a grant, what to do.
Thank you very much. Councillors, we now move on to item 16, to discuss requests that were used by the community consent, it might have been to quality of assets, and that there was a resolution of property and assets to explore, the leasing of a van. But this has been reported for us, and I'd like to ask Gerard if you would be happy to speak to this, because it's new in place.
Thank you, your worship. I was tasked, following the last meeting of property and assets, when we discussed, or you discussed, a recommendation to purchase a second-hand, four-year-old Nissan electric-powered vehicle, and I was tasked with a couple of things. One was to research if we, as a council, are permitted to take out a loan as a lease on a new vehicle, I'll come to that in a minute, and the second thing is to basically understand where we might have been able to purchase such a vehicle. And on Monday, yesterday, Melissa Taylor came in, and I tasked her with both those tasks. In fact, the former one was via Jane, who went to the Society, as someone's had association over councils, and because we are appropriately qualified as a council, that we are permitted to take out a loan, and that is perfectly legal, because we have a qualified clerk and a qualified responsible financial officer, so that's fine. But the piece that Melissa did on research for the vehicle didn't go quite so well, because simply, there is such a demand on the parts that are making vehicles, as are showing in this report here in front of you, is mainly the items that are being used in other things like smartphones and tablets and all that other electronic wizardry, that there is an enormous shortage of new vehicles. Lord knows how the government's going to be able to meet its target by 2030, but that's what we're told. And the second point, the second bullet on this report before you, is that I've identified the kilowatt range of the vehicle that we looked at, 24 kilowatt, with about 100 miles, 80 to 100 miles distance. The new vehicles, which you asked...
How many vehicles?
There would be a 40 kilowatt, you can't get one, and would have a distance of about 150 miles, and the plan is to get to a 60 kilowatt battery pack, which would take us about 200 plus miles. Now, my point on this one, your worship, is that our vehicles will do about 10 miles a day, and frequently back to a charger, so I think that's worthy of note. And the third point is almost an opinion from the climate emergency resilience officer about, you know, by not entering into this spirit of purchasing another vehicle, an electric vehicle, then we wouldn't be helping to reduce our carbon emissions. So I've summarised it in the bottom, what I've already shared with you about the kilowattage and the distances. And third, my final point is that we still have FJ Chalk have agreed to holding the vehicle at the same deal that we've already struck with them, if that's what you choose to do this evening. Thank you, your worship.
So councillors, just to reiterate, unfortunately, there does not seem to be a vehicle to do with, and these are the issues that we need to address. But vehicles we do with, if on hold for this council, should we wish to purchase it? But if we don't, I imagine that we can have it pretty quickly by somebody else.
I'd just like to reiterate what I said at the property and assets, that as has been proved here, most journeys are less than 10 miles, that a hybrid vehicle would suffice. They're a lot more readily available, they're cheaper, and you don't actually tend to use the petrol powered hybrid vehicle, because you're generally using the electric parts, because you're doing short journeys, but if you ever had to go further and the petrol option is there, or the diesel option is there. So that's, I would just like to reiterate, that might be worth looking into. And I just want, I don't understand, but why is rising Bitcoin affecting the availability of vans?
So councillor, any other councillor which should speak to this? Councillor Tucker?
I agree with councillor Henderson, I think we need to do some more research and take it back property and assets for them to make a decision.
Thank you. Any other councillor?
Yeah, I'll go with that, with the suggestion to take it back, but I'm also very much aware that Chalks, the garage, they're not going to want to hold the van they have forever and a day. And if we can't get one on lease higher, then I think we've got to make a decision, because we're not, if we leave it, to go back to property and assets again, I'm pretty sure Chalks are going to want to sell that van, because it's going to be in high demand. And also, then we will only be able to possibly to get a dual fuel job in.
What was suggested is the solution.
What you're suggesting, so really, what the suggestion is, is that we cut out the idea of having a full electric van and go for a dual fuel. So that's it, that's what really is being said, yeah?
Councillor Dunn, do you have your hand up?
No, that's my...
Councillor Prior, councillor Dugall, councillor...
I'll need to go first, okay. Being an Aryan, I will do that. I think we should go for this second-hand vehicle that's being held for us. As has been pointed out, there's high demand for them, there's a reason why there's high demand for them. Once we have our own electric vehicle, we basically have no more costs. We have our own solar panels, which hopefully will be sorted, we have our own electric vehicle charging points, and so, once we've got the, we don't have to buy petrol, we are absolutely okay. A milk float would take us the 10 miles around town. This is way better than that, and it will last us for many years and do very good service. I don't see any reason not to accept the fact that it's being held for us at a really good price, considering that the prices are going to go through the roof because of the shortage of electric vehicles. So I would recommend that we follow the advice given here and go for the second-hand vehicle. I certainly am proposing that, yes.
We have seven proposals. Councillor Smart, we've got seven proposals. Councillors, does anyone wish to speak against the proposal? Councillor...
I believe that the proposal made by councillor Henderson is the obvious one to go for. I think that until we have research, whether we can get a dual fuel vehicle, the point he makes is that we operate on electricity largely, because short journeys there are, and we don't use fuel in the odd occasion that we've got further. I think the bottom jumping into this where we've been just debating, I think, property and assets, that we're going into old technology here, that the technology is moving on so fast, and maybe held up by the short tips of moment, once they come on stream, you ensure all of these manufacturers will be turning out more advanced vans, and I don't, we should be buying into old technology when there is a stopgap, which would also show our commitment to reducing our carbon footprint by buying a dual fuel van that wouldn't be largely operated on the petrol, would be actually reducing our carbon footprint, but in a proper economic judgment, and in fact, the property and assets committee was looking at leasing, I think if the idea of dual fuel was developed, and that would have been to be researched there as well. So I think I'm telling you to do research, what the position would be of the dual fuel van, we shouldn't be jumping into spending taxpayers' money when actually, if we were our own money, we'd be looking more thoroughly at the dual fuel option before we spent a little bit of money.
Thank you very much. I did not say councillor Henderson said, and suspend as they proposed, great. Councillor, the councillor which should speak for the motion?
I would say for the councillor. I'm quite passionate that we need, as a council, to be seen towards the town, to be fighting this whole carbon business. Whatever's causing climate change and temperature rises is moving more rapidly, and you're talking to a trained scientist here. We've got to show the town we mean business, and I imagine that we should, I support the proposal, I think we've got to move forward for two reasons. One, that the town clerk and his team need a van now, that this is very suitable for the job. I appreciate it might be more expensive than a hybrid, but I don't care. I actually think we can afford this easily, and that we can show the town, this is Glastonbury Town Council with its electric vehicle buzzing around. We've got to motivate people to move this way.
Thank you very much. I would like to take one point of order, which is with the town clerk, that we do actually have the finances for this project.
I can confirm, your worship, through the correspondence I've had with the responsible financial officer, that the funds are available.
Councillors, I mind a little bit of time, and I'm mindful that you will express your opinion about this proposal, I move to vote, all those in favour tonight.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
All those in favour tonight.
One, two, three, four.
Any abstentions on that? I move to record your votes.
You want to record a vote, your worship? Is there a second after that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Bear with me, please, just one second. Okay, so if you're in favour of the motion to purchase a four-year-old electric van from FJ Chalk, I'll read out your names, please, I'll do it as a name to vote, if you don't mind. Councillor Coles, in favour or against?
All.
Councillor Cousins?
All.
Councillor Ronnie Dugall?
All.
Councillor Ian Tucker?
Against.
Councillor Leica Brown?
All.
Councillor Nick Cottle?
For.
Councillor Clive Bishop?
Aye.
Councillor John Keary?
Yes.
Councillor Sue Barnett?
All.
Councillor Steve Henderson?
Aye.
Councillor Paul Lund?
Aye.
Councillor Christine Prior?
All.
Councillor Mike Smythe?
All.
Councillor Brian Outen?
All.
Councillor Ian Much?
All.
Okay, spare with me, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, that's 11, your worship, in favour of the motion, and one, two, three, four, against with no abstentions, the motion's passed.
Thank you very much. Thank you, councillor. What's the cost of this vehicle?
14,000, as in the report, 14,000 pounds.
We now move on to the mandatory citing part of the evening, which is item 17, called mandatory bodies, and before we go into that, I think that we should give two people here a resounding of applause, councillor Byrd and councillor Tucker, they have all they've done. And over to councillor Tucker, and councillor Johnson, if you wish to speak, but after councillor Tucker, I'm sure we've all been happy.
Thank you, your worship. Well, as I reported at the beginning of the meeting, the bid was pretty well fully successful. We've been told by the MP who's investigated now that the bid that was slightly, didn't fit all the criteria, was the agricultural bit, but they were not to take heart at that or to take badly to it, because he thinks there are areas that we might be able to get around. It wasn't totally turned down, but there are issues with that. But, and listening to what the members of the public had to say, and I sort of picked up on some of the things that have been picked up on, I mean, the things like the electric bus, the things like the tree covered car park, the things like the travellers' site, there is money in the bid for all these things to try and provide solution, the issue with fusion, hopefully when fusion reloads, they've got to work with the other groups in the town, it might result...
Show them up.
So I do believe that there is some huge opportunities, but as I said, also, do not underestimate the amount of work that's going to be involved by the various groups who are going to now have to pick up these projects and run with them, because it is going to be huge, it's going to be hugely scrutinised. And now, of course, we get to the tricky bit. We've now been offered the money, what we've not seen is the heads of terms, and that's the next bit of work that's got to be done. So within, I think we've got six weeks, I'm looking at Liz, but I think that's what they told us, that we've got now to agree heads of terms for all these projects. So there's going to be a huge amount of work, there's got to be, that is a very tight opportunity to make sure that all the groups that have got funding bids in are now going to be satisfied with the heads of terms that that particular bid is going to take. So there is some tripwires on the way ahead, but we've overcome all the others, and what I would like the council to do tonight is actually write to the officers at Mendip, because they've put in a huge amount of work, and thank them for the successful bid that the council achieved, because I think that is worthy. As you know, I've stood and criticised Mendip on many occasions, I think it's quite ironic that at the very death knell of the organisation, we actually get, we actually get to have a sort of dividend, and I do see the irony of that in this. But I think that we've achieved this by coming up with a sort of a fairly visionary bid, and by involving people from the whole community in the things that have been pulled together. And I think that's what has made it successful, and I think that's what will make it a success. And what we've now got to do is make sure that we can work with those groups to actually deliver the project. But I probably can't tell you anymore, because we only had this information, it happened at 6 this morning, and we've still not seen the real detail, and the devil could be in the detail, because we're not clear on that yet. But Liz might have a little bit more information than I have, and I'd be pleased to hear as well.
As before this speech, there's an endorsement of councillor Tucker's recommendation to write to the officers, and I will supply side. Yeah. Thank you. Liz?
Thank you. If this is going to be really hard for that, I'm actually here, so there's the agreement of the heads of term, and there's ensuring there's adequate project, and it's against one of the twelve projects, and then there is... And then the actual two of those projects are, so it's going to be a kind of like an offer. And I can't believe that councillor Tucker is coming up to the street, he is on the town council, in this particular weather, it's quite... I was worried that some of my public place projects, and the projects that Sidobson has, projects of Cool Leisure, projects of Yarney, I was really concerned that those might just get popped off, and that it could be that generation, that's not that there's anything wrong, but I think it's important for all the people in the town to have that kind of thing to face to do with the project. And one of the things that I mentioned while we were on, one of the many, many things, is I think we had one meeting, you know, right at the beginning to pull the whole board together, and for the rest of time, we've not met as one. But I was, when I was trying to get Cool Leisure back in, after it had been pushed out unsevered, I mentioned the point of the need to, that it's been looking after the workers, and ensuring that not just the workers, but the families, physical and medical health group after, and that actually goes to being more important now, as I mentioned, ever in our life, and the young civil servants, they're... civil servants, it's really important. And that gave me a kind of insight, thinking that was going on at government. It's very easy for us to see the sort of top-level political approach to something, but there are some really interesting young people working on the project. And I think it would be really interesting, everyone is clear that there are two things different about this project. One was grassroots conversation, I don't think it's happened like this anywhere else. And the other one is the different creative thinking that is absolutely right, not only for this town, but for this town. So I never saw I can't say it.
Never seen you smile so much.
How wonderful. Councillor?
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, congratulations both and all the other members of the board. Just a couple of things. Do we know, were there any of the towns that applied that didn't get anything? Was it? All been announced, yeah. All right, fair enough. That's just about interesting. The other thing I was going to say, obviously, there's been a lot of a storm on Facebook, et cetera, of people saying what they'd like to do with this money. We all know that, you know, the projects were part of the bid anyway, and it's all been allocated. So would some sort of press release be in order to say, obviously to promote the success, but also to say that these were the, the hard work that's gone into this, and these are the projects that we look forward to achieve this farthest thing? And just explain to the public who maybe just think we've had this twenty-three million pounds, it's probably in the clerk's office as we speak, you know, and just explain to the public that easy. It's arrived in gold, will you? Sadly, the price of gold, it was the size of this book. But we'll be forward on that. I think that the press release will probably come out of the Mendip, is that right?
If, if, your worship, press, I could, I know that they were interviewing the communications officer today, and I haven't heard the outcome of that, and that there is a board meeting on Friday. I'm assuming that from the Friday board meeting, there will be the communication officer giving out all the details, by which time, hopefully, we will know a little bit more of the facts, because as I say, this is really, really news, new news. So we will know a lot more, and I would just suggest that it's probably better for us to wait that bit and actually be able to put out the facts. You are absolutely correct. I mean, people need to understand that this money has, we've had to bid for particular projects, and each project had to go into quite a bit of detail. There isn't, you aren't then suddenly going to be able to spend it on something totally different. So, you know, this is allocated already, and people need to be aware of that.
Thank you, your worship. I would like to make a suggestion, if you let me know, had seen it on social media, that we actually put out something on social media saying that it's received and that other information will follow quickly, so that it's not actually going along some of the directions of some of the information that is my email inbox in connection with the news.
Thank you very much. I wondered, Chair, whether you would be able to contact Julie Sullivan and find out exactly what Mendip planned to do around the press release, and ask, seek her advice as to whether or not it would be useful for the town council to make a sole statement about the plan that was put in, because if we actually highlight the investment plan, people would understand that if you press what the man was, the water pool, and perhaps people just need to be able to cover it.
I carry it to you on that, that's fine, I'll deal with that.
Your worship, just to say, the first Mendip press release went out, it went out very early, because the news centre involving it asked you, they missed, was that highly thought, Mendip was like, well, I don't know. I think it's really important that people understand that this is a continuation process before you see that this is not, if you do. I can stand to the length of the government press release that came out this morning, and that's got all the other towns in this province, and certainly just higher than traditional stuff. And quite a few some other towns, too. So others, some others are down around fifteen, sixteen, hundred, hundred and fifty, the way people work together. The hard work we give to add, and people say that, if you don't know, you think it's not the right. Of course, and actually, she's the best, the hard work, but a brilliant set of projects this people.
Thank you. I think we've heard several times that the working together aspect, all so many people together to work together within our diverse community, and I wonder whether we should say, we should say something along those lines, that this is a real testament to what happens when a group of people can work together with the other parts, when the residents can't get their work together as a whole, as a team, something along those lines.
Unity and diversity.
Thank you. Well, just, because one thing that hasn't been said is, you know, the work that people that you can integrate, have to do, to get this far as well. Yes, we know that Mendip are really pushing us extremely hard, sometimes to the point that we've had to criticise them, had to say, no, we've had enough, too much. We've been, we've been like, unfortunately, to one of the two projects, which we've just referred to as GOC, G O C, it's kind of running out of the red eye a little bit, we didn't know where we were. And so all the teams across, with our friend over there as well, the bird, with all the talent, lots of discussion going. We've been going since, what, the autumn of twenty nineteen, and we've produced reports, I think we've got fourteen more reports that we've been wanting, we need to produce. Some of those reports are past the full page, but they want incredible amounts of detail, more so than if we owned and managed ourselves, we would just simply go to an architect, a developer, a hostess survey, all those things, and we would just commission them. But their process is governed by human process, which requires endless amount of detail. We've become very familiar with the green book and the platform. If you don't know what those are, don't ask, because they're government books which detail what has to be done for accounting, accountancy purposes, to acquire, get funding, and so on, you know what that's about. So just to note, to save the community groups, they're not out of the water yet, possible that some may not make it through the next stage, but hopefully, if it all goes well, it will be a relatively advanced and group-like, supported by a screw, one left for us, a whole group of people.
Great, thank you very much. Well done, councillor Lund, and you're certainly right to remind us that the community groups themselves put an awful lot of work into this, and I look round the table and see many faces who've been involved, so thank you very much for reminding us. Councillor, I think that that is our news release sorted, and I would say that we should also be picking up anything Mendip have had and pushing it through our website and our places as well. This is the big story for the moment. Chair, are there any communications to add?
Just two, your worship, as I may. Already mentioned or alluded to is the introduction of the Small Works Programme to introduce a twenty-mile-per-hour zone across the whole of Glastonbury. The bit that I'm particularly proud of from this council is that we made representation to include the piece of road from Ashwell Lane right through to Cheltenham Street and beyond, and that's now included. So that is now out for public statements to be hopefully implemented very soon. And the second piece is, actually, that's probably more correspondence than announcements, so I'll come under nineteen with that one. Okay, then only that we have received correspondence about a festival of the Rose, which is being organised by, predominantly by Caroline Rithenden, for those who know who I'm referring. It's on July the twenty ninth through to August the second, but I have indicated that St Dunstan's Garden might be available for them to have a gazebo to show what we're there about doing that festival.
I wanted to say that I did take another little tablet to St Benedict's that was kindly donated by Gerard from Town Hall Staff, and Jane said it was a marvellous device, so I told them that it would be better for an older pupil. But if anybody hears of any tablets or computers, like, we don't have any in the pipeline at the moment.
Thank you. Is the Frostbear still going ahead this year? That's confirmed, is it? There was. Your worship, it would be really helpful if people aren't going to be able to make meetings when Frostbear, we weren't corret at the Frostbear meeting.
Changed the time?
I didn't change the time.
I said I couldn't come.
But we did struggle with that, so we made some strategic decisions, but we are still not able to constitute, so there will be another meeting. And I did ask whether it could be in the evening so that members could make it easier.
Thank you, that's very good. Thanks very much. Any other communications or other ones? Councillor, you know what the press release is? It's news. Chair, if you take to the action or rather between the two of us?
With your blessing, your worship, I'm just going to revisit the financial plan, because I've been texting our responsible financial officer whilst we've been, whilst you've been deliberating other items. I'll just share with you the line. I wrote, "Hi Jane, at council this evening, I've been asked why our borrowings have gone from two eight three four six eight to three two three double oh double seven. Do you know why?" And the response I've had, it's, "Hi Chair, it's because I didn't include Herbisfield in last year's figures, so it was just St Dunstan's house and the remainder of the town hall loan." And I went back to her, and so as you come back to the last bit, she said to me, "What I'm trying to say is that last year's figure didn't include Herbisfield, but included St Dunstan's house and the remainder of the town hall loan now repaid." I think that's the most important point, your worship, is the now repaid bit, which is why that has now balanced itself out. Do you wish to still revisit that item at the next agenda, or are you now comfortable to move on with it? Yeah. Thank you. Now to answer your point on number twenty-one, your worship, actions of this evening's meeting. Spare with me, please. There's an action at the very beginning, all to do with Stone Down and, where are we, two?
No closure, for Solstice.
I won't reread that, because we had a long deliberation on that one, but that's well noted. Action there, action for me to produce a sign and put in the market cross, "Please do not feed the birds." Action for me to contact the minister and the MP, as well as the county council, on the motion of complete extraction. Can I ask, does anyone know, is it George Eustace, who's the minister?
Eustace.
Yeah, Eustace, that's better.
The minister.
Sounds right, yeah.
Action for me to write to the responsible financial officer and thank for her input to the auditor's report. An action, which I've just clarified about why our borrowings had, I've dealt with that one. An action for me to write to the officers at Mendip, who be directly involved with the town fund, and you've made reference to Julie Reader-Sullivan. I'm going to add Tina McEwen, who's a active member of staff, and also Jane Shaw. I'm going to include all three, if you don't mind. And that's it, your worship.
Very briefly, could we not, the pigeon issue on the market cross, "Please do not feed the birds, as this encourages rats and other vermin," because I've had people say they've seen rats running around there.
Have you done that one?
I'm just informing those who have, you might need to tell us about the starting orders, and I just want to add that the whole people spoke at three minutes, ten minutes to twelve minutes past seven, finally finished at seven thirty-two. So could you please in future time the further speaking so that we don't have to break our normally, I think that would be your contribution to that.
I will, of course, councillor Keary, and I shall take up two people. Anyone speaks, remind us, of course, that I will look to the board.
Where's the acquirer?
I'm just following on from councillor Keary's, could you ensure that the members of the public have a mic, also, so they don't have to shout and spread germs?
Just to have a window, that before I'm back to normal, the town council have communications with Anthony James Peaty, and also with our councillor, Shelby. They are arranging meetings with me in the very near future, I've got them in quite clear, that all that was done before I became a councillor, that there's no need met that if I'm seen walking around Glastonbury or with them, that I'm not cutting costs.
Thank you very much, councillor, thanks for that. Councillor, I spoke to the meeting.
Your worship, just finally, this, I hope, I hope, your worship, this is the only meeting we're going to have to deal with it in this format, we hope, but thank you for bearing with me. I've maintained at least a metre between you all, and I've done my level best with the minimum amount of microphones we have. I couldn't have done anything more, but. Been there.
It's worth saying. So I can meet at age, she put out four thousand surveys.
Well, it's more.
Four thousand surveys, you got thirty results.
We can get in the wise men as well.
So that's what the people.
Yes.
And then she surprised our people quite a few times. Somerset County land.